Okay, so looking at the remaining study session items and I guess there's some big cases on the public hearing that will probably take some time to do. What we're gonna do is reconvene the study session. We only have about one, two, three, four items. I'm gonna give staff till 6:45 to get through those. At 6:45 we'll stop and then we'll go over to the public hearing and start getting on those items. So, study sessions reconvene. We'll start with item eight, DR 18151, Aldi grocery store, Sydney. And again, staff, if you can just hit key points on your presentations. We want to blow through, get through these as much as possible and give you as much feedback at the same time.
Good evening, commission members. My name's Sydney Bethel. The location here is going to be at the, I apologize, at the southwest corner of Pecos Road and Market Street. Directly to the north is Unison Bank. That was recently built. And to the east is the Winko Foods. The request is a, I apologize, Aldi retail grocery store as phase one with a master site plan for future phases. Future phases are to include two pads and one shop. The applicant is requesting submit, to submit their construction documents at risk. I'll try to keep it brief here. Some of the main points here that I'm looking to get some sort of direction on our overall site design. As you read in my report, there were some issues with parking, but we've been working closely with the applicants to revise that and they are aware of our first review comments. The landscape plan, they're proposing 14,120 square feet of onsite landscaping and 14,690 square feet of offsite landscaping. They are deficient by their landscaping by 2.1% for onsite, but they are providing that almost 15,000 square feet offsite for the two private drives that are proposed. They also are required to do entry landscaping because they are part of the Val Vista Square design guidelines. I am requesting some input on adding some additional foundation landscaping, specifically on either side of the cart corrals here. This is a similar design to the Aldi that you saw last month that was approved at the September 5th commission meeting. As you see here with the elevations, very similar to the other Aldi. The colors are consistent with the Val Vista Square design guidelines and they are providing a metal canopy that is also a functional accent feature. Here is just a reference photo of the previously approved Aldi located here at the top and our current Aldi here located at the bottom. We would like to have the applicant raise the parapet roofing to conceal the proposed screen walls. So that is a similar request that was asked of the previous Aldi and the applicant is perceptive to this request. This is just an overview of the input that I'm looking to receive. So I am here for any questions and I'd love to hear your input on the site.
All right, thank you. Any questions or comments for staff? Good? Okay, I think we're good.
All right, thank you.
Vice Chairman, can I point out that it's Sydney's first presentation in front of you this evening?
Oh.
As you can tell, very nervous.
And we already threw the pressure on you to get through as fast as possible.
You did a great job, Sydney.
Yes, great job. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you.
Welcome to staff. We'll move along to item 10, GP 1812, Z 1826, Z 1814, Bellamy. Josh.
Good evening again, Vice Chair, Commission members. This is a proposed rezone, general plan change and preliminary plat application proposed on the southeast corner of Greenfield and Jermaine. The current general plan designation is approximately 16 acres of community commercial. They're hoping to switch that to residential 3.5 to 5 and 24 acres of residential five to eight dwelling units an acre to 3.5 to 5. This is a proposed gated residential development. The overall site is 40.04 acres gross. It's located approximately 1.5 miles from Mercy Gilbert and also from the Santan Village Marketplace. The site was just part of a massive annexation in 2007. Town annexed about 700 acres and also rezoned. Just overall, for the general plan, as I said, they're going from community commercial to residential and then from a higher density residential on this outer backwards L portion to the lower 3.5 to 5. The zoning pretty much mimics that as well, community commercial. The zoning designation they're looking for is single-family detached for both the community commercial, the current community commercial and the current SF6. They're looking to switch that to also single-family detached. They are requesting three deviations, which I will go through more in detail as we hit the appropriate exhibits, but just real quick, they're requesting a deviation in the max wall height for the pedestrian entries from eight feet to, they want to increase it to nine feet, 10 inches. And as I said, it'll make more sense as I go through the exhibits. They're also requesting a reduction in the required for perimeter wall height next to arterials. They're requesting reduction from eight feet to six feet, eight inches. And then they're also looking to reconfigure the open space on the corner of the arterials. We normally have a 250 foot by 50 foot wide landscape tract that we require on those corners. They're just looking to reconfigure that a little bit. Just overall for the development plan, there's, even though it's one zoning designation that they're looking to switch to, they are looking to present two different lot types, 91 units of a 46 by 82 and then another larger oversized SFD lot of 55 feet by 120. As you can see on this development plan, most of, well, all of the lower, the smaller lots are located more towards Jermaine Road and more pushed towards the intersection. The larger lots have been organized so they are in the southeastern portion, kind of buffer the larger lot homes surrounding it. Just overall on the landscape plan, as you can see, for their requested deviation, this housing lot eight is encroaching in this 250 by, this 50 by 250 landscaping by 600 feet, but overall for this landscaping corner, they're required by the code to have, is it approximately 25,000 square feet of landscaping? However, on this corner right now, it's actually almost 35,000 square feet of landscaping. They're also adding a nice entry feature or a feature on that corner, I guess, in exchange for that deviation. All right, just an overview of the amenity area, the wall plan. So they are requesting that deviation reduction of the required eight feet height along the perimeter walls next to the arterial from eight feet to six feet, eight inches. Staff does have some concern, just as you can see in this wall plan, there are these pedestrian corridors. The applicant has requested, traditionally we have asked for view fencing, view walls between those just to increase safety, more eyes on. The applicant is requesting to not include that and just have a regular eight-foot wall in those corridors. Just, so I would like your input on that. And then, so as you can see on this pedestrian entry on the bottom, there, this is the requested deviation of, it is wall, so they can only go up to a max of eight feet. They're asking for nine feet, what was it, nine feet, eight in, 10 inches, I apologize, nine feet, 10 inches on just these two features right here. And that's just overview of the wall plan. And this is an example of the, just that feature that they're putting at the corner of Jermaine and Greenfield in that landscape area. This is a park and trash plan. They do have on-street parking. They are meeting those parking requirements, just internal private street cross-section. And then this is the internal pedestrian circulation plan. The orange is existing concrete sidewalk. The blue is new sidewalk that they'll be adding. And that's pretty much it. So I would like to hear any input that you have on not only the general plan and zone change, but also the proposed development plan as well.
All right, thank you. Any comments or questions for staff? Commissioner Louisville.
Josh, thank you for your presentation. I, when this comes back before us, the applicant, I would, I would be interested in hearing why we're changing this up. It's the only really commercial property, a mile and a half, it looks like, as I look at the aerial photographs and trying to figure out whether or not this community needs to go away or if, or if we should give it some time in a more robust economy to actually develop into something.
Real quick, if I may, there was, they did include a market study, which I did include at the back of your report. Our economic development team is also in the process of doing their own analysis of this change too, because as you know, we are concerned about losing the commercial. So those, you have theirs and then you will have ours when it comes to public hearing.
Staff has traditionally been concerned about that and so I just, I just hadn't heard anything about it in your presentation and I appreciate you skipping through and probably not mentioning it because of that, but the overall site plan and the area, I am concerned because I was the engineer on the White Wing and Jermaine Estates and that area was intended to be left pretty open and pretty large lots and that kind of stuff. And so I, I'll, when the presentation comes back, I'll just be very interested in hearing that and why, the justification for this. And I realize that land prices have gone up and different things and so you have to get higher densities in order to make it pencil out. And so I'm cognizant of all of those issues, but I would just be very interested in the applicant making that a point in his presentation when they come back.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Sure for look.
Just had one question. On the perimeter walls, why are they requesting the reduction in height?
As far as I know, aesthetic purposes, it was explained to me that six feet height pretty much is, would be eye level, so they just don't want these looming walls on the perimeter of the, of their proposed development. So they added this extra eight inches to still reduce it, but still keep the eye line, you know, the backyards blocked from eyesight, but still kind of reducing it to, in their opinion, make it more aesthetically pleasing.
Anyone else? Commissioner Johns?
So, well, thank you, Josh. Yeah, I'm trying to get my map to come up on Google Earth, but it's not cooperating. So I think this is fairly close to the freeway. Is that correct? You didn't give us an overall very...
As you can see, this is a Santan Village Marketplace. You have Mercy Gilbert right here. This is Greenfield. I apologize if I should have put...
Where are the closest commercial, like, this would have been like a grocery store or something like that. Where would those be accordingly?
I am not 100% on that, but I will find out.
That would be helpful, you know, to kind of get an idea of what's it, because there's a lot of them north of the freeway, which, you know, we kind of let go because everything just skipped a half a mile over. And so they're competing with like the freeway and Gilbert Road and things like that. So this one's like opposite and we've traditionally has been, we've been, you know, entertaining them, but you know, why, why are we downzoning it? I'm for it because if you show us where those other locations are, which, you know, I was kind of like hoping my Google map would show up and show there. I'm pretty much supportive of it because of that freeway, because it's sucking all the commercial and commercials sucking anyhow, so.
If you'd like, I could try to pull up my Google map.
There's a Fry's Brian about a mile to the northeast.
I appreciate that. Thank you. And then let's go ahead and go back to the corner where you have the corner space that you're trying to, you said that that is cutting into the square footage. Is there a line that goes across or is it just a square footage requirement that they're trying to meet?
There is a line. Per the Land Development Code, we do require 250, 250 feet going along each arterial, 50 feet wide. They are cutting into it about, if you can imagine that, just about that small little square.
Like five feet or something like that?
Yeah, it's a total of about 600 square feet, but as I said, they just rearranging it. They're including more than what is traditionally.
I see that as acceptable. I mean, what kind of amenity feature are they giving you? So you said that they're kind of giving you a feature there that, I don't see a design of a feature.
That would be right here is, this is the over, over-the-top overview and then this would just be what you're looking at if you're standing on that corner.
Okay, I think that's fair. And then the last thing, like, I agree, why are they reducing the heights of the walls? And again, can you show us where the eight-foot walls that staff would like to see? That be along this side back over here?
No, that is an established wall that's existing, that's the White Wing existing wall. That won't be...
You're talking about in the center corridor that's running through?
Oh, those.
Is that the eight-foot wall that they're reducing to 6'4"?
These walls right along the arterials.
Out here.
Correct.
I don't have an issue with that per se because that's really, eight-foot wall's a selling point for the buyer. I mean, I would agree with the applicant about that. So what's the distance for this green belt or this walkway? What kind of distance are we looking at there?
Across or along?
Little screen, this way.
Not 100% on that. I believe it is about 50 feet and then it's about 100, these ones are about 120 feet long and this is about 210 feet long. And I apologize, I'm not 100% on the width of that one.
They're pretty wide. I mean, so if you didn't have a view fence on it?
It looks about 80, yeah.
Well, I would tend to agree with staff. That would be nice to have some sort of breakup for security, but I get that, you know, you don't want, and I'm pointing at the screen again to your, so I can see that you don't want these people's yards to be completely open to the side, but you know, if you go up at Val Vista Lakes, they did a really good job on their fencing and I really don't think they've lost their privacy, but they kind of did a mixture. You have kind of green up in their driveway areas or where they're view fencing up in the driveway areas, but then they're solid in the back. So maybe there's a mixture that you can work with the applicant on trying to achieve the requirement, but not totally, you know, lose their privacy to the yards. But I think it's a nice product and yeah, I would support, especially if there's other entities for the downzone in that area that's competing with, and they're competing with Santan. So I think, yeah, if they come forward with us on the, and what the other board members have mentioned, I think that would be something to support, so.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. You got everything you need, Josh?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you. Let's move along to item 11, GP 1813, residents at Santan Village. Stephanie? And we'll see if we can knock out 11 and 12 before that 6:45.
All right. Good evening, Commissioners and Chair. This is a minor general plan amendment and a rezoning for residences at Santan Village. The site is located south and west of the, on the southwest corner of Santan Village Parkway and Ray Road. The hard corner is about 3.48 acres on the southwest side and that is not part of this rezoning, so that will stay regional commercial zoning. This proposal is to modify the general plan to change from regional commercial to residential at 14 to 25 dwelling units per acre. And for the zoning, it's the same size of 15.77 acres, rezoning from regional commercial to multifamily medium with a planned area development. And just to give some history, a little bit to refresh some memories and if there's any new people that aren't aware, this is the Crossroads Center PAD. This is a larger area, it's about 586 acres. This site was originally part of that. It was parcel D. To orient yourself, north is to the left and the red parcel B area is the Santan Mall. So this was approved originally under the development of Crossroads Center for a hospital that never happened in 2008 under legal direction with staff. The property owner rezoned parcel D to take it out of the Crossroads Center PAD so that it could be zoned to conventional regional commercial so that it didn't have the limitations of that hospital development plan that never happened. For the property owner who also owns a, let me move this, they also own the D area, parcel E and parcel A. They wanted to enter into a planning agreement with the town to still keep those rights of the Crossroads Center PAD so that 20% multifamily was still allowed and the planning agreement also limited the amount on those parcels. So that is some background. For this rezoning, this is essentially going to update that planning agreement as well, so it's kind of a swap, which you'll hear some terms at the public hearing portion, but there was an approved site that was part of parcel E along the freeway and that is essentially being swapped through that planning agreement to be located on this parcel D section. So noted that it is a more viable site because it's not along the freeway frontage. But to focus on the rezoning, this development plan for the 15.77 acres, it's proposed to have about 377 units of multifamily with three and four-story buildings at 23.9 dwelling units per acre and it's to support the Santan Village Regional Mixed-Use Development Area. The main entrance is along Santan Village Parkway, so north is going to be to your right now. Main entrance will be along Santan Village Parkway. There are private drives to the south and to the west. On-street parking will be provided along Columbus Drive and there will be, this is modified a bit when you, when we come back to public hearing, but there will be two exit onlys along the private drive on Columbus. So the four-story buildings will be along the west side and the three stories will front Ray Road, Santan Village Parkway and Ivanhoe. The intent is to create a more dense urban feel so that the buildings are closer to the streets and the parking lots are concealed behind the buildings and eventually when the regional commercial portion is developed, that will block this parking area as well. For the planned area development, there are four deviations. So the first one is the maximum height. Right now it is required to be 40 feet and the proposal is to be 55 feet. That's to accommodate the four-story and that is also in mimicking the four-story hotel that's to the south and what is permitted in regional commercial and that vertical height overlay that is just outside of this area. For the two setback requests, the front along Santan Village Parkway at 30 feet is requested to be changed to 20 feet and the side street from 30 feet to 25 feet. That again is to bring the buildings closer to the streets while still meeting a landscape and a multi-use easement along Santan Village Parkway. And the last common open space, the requirement is 40% of the net site. This development is requesting 26% of the net site. Part of that reasoning is that not all of the amenities are located outside on the ground floor. A lot of them are incorporated into the buildings and we'll see that through a future DR submittal, but there is proposed to be a Sky Lounge deck and this is also meant to be integrated into the Santan Village area so that amenities can be reached outside of this area as well, offsite. So if you have any comments on the development plan or requested deviations, I can take those.
Great, thank you. Any comments or questions for staff?
My question would be is, is, has there, was there a market study done preliminary to drawing these plans and proposing the project?
I do not have a market study, no.
Commissioner Louisville.
Stephanie, thank you for your, for your presentation. I, in looking at this project, it's, we've seen some higher density projects come in into the area and specifically into the property owned by the Les Swoers and this is one of those. And so, and looking at that deviation, we had approved a plan earlier and it sounds like you're going to swap that and that's, that all sounds good. I trust that staff is keeping track of all of that because there's, there's been enough movement that it's hard to keep up on a, on a monthly or, or whenever it comes before us about every five months or something or six months, we'll, we hear something else about this property, so, or about this area. So it's difficult for us to keep up with it and we trust that you are, so. But in looking at this, this, this seems like a very non-typical development, but it's in a very non-typical part of town. And, and so I'm generally in support of taking a look at it, even though it's, we've never seen anything like it in the town of Gilbert. I would be curious as to whether we've seen anything like it across the valley. There's a lot of parking space, huge parking space, just surrounded by buildings and so while it's interesting and intriguing and I'm generally in favor of it, trusting that they've done their market research and that they're, that they're on par with it, I would still appreciate being able to see if there's anything like it in the valley and could we see pictures of that, just to bring us up to speed a little bit. That would be helpful. Other than that, I don't, I don't know what else that you needed input on, so.
Thank you. The only conceptual item that we have at the moment is just some very preliminary elevations before DR is submitted. So this is just a kind of a feeling of what it would look like. And this is a three-story product.
Okay, thank you. So there is one, item 12, UP 17049, platinum paint and body. Josh, can you give like a three-minute presentation and then we'll take two minutes of comments and then we'll be done with study session except for that item 13?
It would be my pleasure. All right. All right, so real quick, this is over on Power in Pecos. This is just out of the, south of the future Gilbert Public Training Facility tonight. For this request, they are requesting a use permit for vehicle services heavy. What they're doing is a paint and auto body shop in a general commercial zoning district. It requires a conditional use permit. In your packets, you will find the four conditions required to be met in order for a conditional use permit to be approved. So just overall, we would like to hear input on whether or not this design meets those, those four findings and then of course the concurrent design review that would go forward if it was approved and just overall thoughts on site and overall design. This will be in two phases. The first phase will be this 45,000 two-story paint and auto body shop. There is 10 roll-up doors that will be located on the west, south, or west, north and east of the building, but they will be behind a closed, an enclosed, a walled off and a gated service yard in the back. None of them will be facing the public, the residential to the south. And as I said, all the, the parking for the cars that will be coming in will be behind this enclosed gated facility. This is an overall, for the landscape plan, there is this 120-foot landscape easement that has been put on this property by SRP for a future power corridor or power line corridor. To the north of that is the future Rittenhouse Trail and then you have the railroad and then of course north of that is the training facility. To the south, you have the Pecos six-lane arterial and then to the west, east, I'm sorry, you have the power road. These are the building designs, very streamlined, very clean-looking. Staff would just like some input on the horizontal... Staff would just like some input on the, the horizontal movement of it. Just overview of the colors and that's it. And just real quick, this second, there's a second office that will be planned sometime in the future, approximately nine thousand square feet. So I would like to hear your comments on the conditional use permit and the overall design.
All right, thank you. Any comments or questions for staff?
Very fast. Elevations, usually I would say that we want to see a little bit more articulation, but for what it is and where it's going, it's kind of set back in the site. There, there is a lot of movement in the entries and they are doing a lot of screening and since it's a building. I, I think for the type of building it is, I think they did a very good job with it. I have a question that, you know, you know, there's a question about a paint body coming into commercial. Well, paint bodies today is a lot cleaner than the old days of what, what you used to think of, of body shop is, even if it's a collision center. But usually the collision centers do need a, a yard and I, oh, I guess I see it, never mind. I see how it's broken up in the back and behind it is the, so, so the fencing on the outside is like an eight-foot fence.
Correct, yes.
So, yeah, I think it's, I don't have any issues with this one.
And they have twenty-four internal bays. All the work will be done inside, nothing will be outside. Outside will just be storage of the cars coming in.
I'm very familiar with, yeah. They're only, they only park the cars out there, wreckers come in, drop them off.
Correct.
And so it's usually pretty clean. They, paint shops, I think, has gotten a bad stigma over, over the years and, you know, they, they don't have the smells, they don't have the, the debris that they usually do and everything's behind closed doors. So I totally get it. So I don't think this is a, a bad use for this area, so, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yeah, are those four trash enclosures that we see facing Pecos right there, kind of back-to-back-to-back right there? Is that correct, Josh?
Yes, yes.
Will there be any site walls? I see some walls there, but I'm not sure at what height those are at, the walls along Pecos.
How high?
Right behind the landscape, median.
Six?
Are you talking about the, I apologize, are you talking about, you said the trash enclosures?
Yes.
Are you talking about the, the walls around the trash enclosures or the walls along Pecos?
No, the, the walls along Pecos.
Oh, correct, yes. They're three-foot high, just standard screening all along the Pecos front, frontage.
I'm just, I'm a little worried we might be looking at a lot of the front of trash enclosures from Pecos Road there. I mean, I know we've got some planting and whatnot and trees, but I don't know, maybe there's a way we could look at that. That might, that might be my only concern.
Thank you.
One else, we're good? I think we're good, Josh, thank you.
Thank you.
So we'll leave thirteen for later. Let's jump back to number two real quick, elect chair and vice chair. Anyone want to make a nomination? For chair first.
I'll jump in and nominate Brian Anderson for chair.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Looked like you were going to pose down there. I just met you tonight.
Okay.
You had to give me some time to not dislike me. All right, so move along to vice chair, I'd like to nominate Commissioner Bloomfield.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Commissioner Bloomfield will be the vice chair, appoint zoning hearing officer and alternate zoning hearing officer. Like to appoint Commissioner Johns for the zoning hearing officer.
Second.
All in favor? Aye, okay, good. You're the zoning hearing officer, Brian. Alternate zoning hearing officer, does anybody want to do that? Want to do it?
I'm gone, I'm gone.
Go on.
Next month's my last.
Oh, okay. Oh, didn't know that.
Cavaney's been the ZHO.
Should we nominate Cavaney? You're not here, you get nominated?
I think you'd be excellent at it, honestly, because he's been the ZHO before and so he would be a, a good support for Brian as he starts out. I think it makes a lot of sense to do that.
All right, so he's nominated for that. So I think we have everybody in place. Yes, we're good for that? So now we'll recess the study session, move along to, hold it order, the regular hearing. First item will be roll call. Anyone doing roll call down there? Oh, okay.
Chairman Brian Anderson.
Yep.
Vice Chairman Laura Bloomfield.
Present.
Commissioner Greg Froelich.
Here.
Commissioner Brian Johns.
Here.
Commissioner Les Smith.
Here.
Alternate Commissioner Daniel SaFuentes.
All right, thank you. Communications from citizens, at this time, members of the public may comment on matters within jurisdictions of town, but not on the agenda. The commission board's response is limited to responding to criticism asking staff to review a matter commented upon or asking that a matter be put on a future agenda. Does anyone here from the public would like to address the commission at this time? Not seeing any, so we'll move along to the public hearing. Public hearing consent items, all items listed below are considered consent calendar items and may be approved by a single motion unless removed at the request of the commission board or for further discussion, action. Other items on the agenda may be added to the consent calendar and approved under a single motion. So we have one item on consent, DR eighteen dash eighty-three Cooley Loop North Apartment Homes. Does anybody need to have any conflicts on this project?
I have a conflict with item seventeen.
Aye.
Just to save time, I have a conflict on item eighteen as well.
That's one, that one's on non-consent. Is there a motion for the public hearing consent? That was right.
Chairman, I move that we approve the consent hearing, or the consent hearing items. Item number seventeen, DR eighteen dash eight-three.
Motion for approval by Vice Chair Bloomfield, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Smith, and if you could just indicate that in the microphone,
Second the motion.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Calendar is approved, we'll move along to public hearing non-consent. Non-consent public hearing items may be heard at an individual public hearing and will be acted upon by the commission board by a separate motion. During the public hearings, anyone wishing to comment in support of or in opposition to public hearing item may do so. If you wish to comment on a public hearing item, you must fill out a public comment form that's located in the back of the room indicating the number, item number on which you wish to be heard. Once the hearing is closed, there will be no further public comment unless requested by a member of the commission board. So I did get a comment card up here saying it's regarding case number twenty and twenty-one. I don't know if they mean item twenty, twenty-one, which are, assuming that's what they mean. That's Catherine Miller, is that correct? Yes, okay, thank you.
Chairman, I need to declare a conflict on item number eighteen as well.
Okay, thank you. So Catherine, on item eighteen, we only have four commissioners. That we, that's a quorum?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So item eighteen, Z eighteen twenty-five Copper Bend, Keith?
Chairman Anderson, members of the commission, good evening. The item before you is Z eighteen twenty-five for the Copper Bend PAD amendment. The, the site for, for this project is, is located, you can see it on the screen in front of you, it's located at the northwest corner of Hunt Highway and one hundred and seventy-second Street in the very far southeast portion of the town of Gilbert. The overview of this project is, I already stated where it was located. The project is approximately nineteen point eight gross acres, seventeen, little over seventeen net. It was originally zoned on March second, two thousand and seventeen to SF ten for thirty-eight single-family lots and it was originally called the Highland Vista's Planned Area Development. So the request before you tonight, and I'll go into it in just a little bit more detail here in a second, but basically it's to modify a condition of approval of the original ordinance twenty-six eleven to allow for fifty-five foot of right-of-way from the center line of Hunt Highway. And to go into that a little more specifically, I wanted to quickly show you the previously approved development plan and, and while you're looking at that, explain what is going on with this PAD amendment. So during the final plat review of, of Copper Bend by the town staff, Maricay Homes, it was brought to their attention by Maricopa County Department of Transportation that they were, that McDott was requiring a shift in the monument line of the, of the center line of Hunt Highway to the north by ten feet. So this requirement by Maricopa County Department of Transportation has necessitated some modifications to the existing development plan, the preliminary plat, and basically the zoning for this. Due to this significant amount of grading work and that has been already completed on the site, it's town staff and after having many meetings with the applicant has determined that the best way to proceed forward and to reduce the right, so what is actually happening is a reduction in the right-of-way from sixty-five feet to fifty-five feet. You can see on this approved development plan in front of you, this is the original one, you can see along Hunt Highway, you can see a trail. I know it's kind of a little bit hard to see, but you can see the sixty-five-foot right-of-way which includes an eight-foot sidewalk, which it was a typo in the staff report, I apologize. The staff report says five and it's actually eight. You can see an eight-foot sidewalk, a twelve-foot DG trail, and then a fifteen-foot landscape setback all the way to the residential property lines. So this requirement by McDott reduces the right-of-way from sixty-five feet to fifty-five feet. So as you can see on this proposed development plan, in order to accommodate this requirement by McDott, that right-of-way was shrunk by ten feet or reduced and the trail along Hunt Highway that was originally proposed had to be relocated. So that trail has now been relocated to the north side of the development along Stacy Road, which borders a county island to the north as well, but it's on the south side of Stacy Road to the north of the development, which will provide a trail connection and, and trail activity and things for not only Copper Bend, but for the immediate area. And we wanted to continue that, that east-west trail connection and the only way to do that, the DG trail, was to provide it to the north of the subdivision. And in order to provide a connection from Hunt Highway to the trail, we decide, it was decided that the trail along the west boundary of the property would be relocated to the east boundary of the property along one hundred and seventy-second Street to provide that connection. So the DG trail will still be there, it's just going to be shifted to the north side of the development. So I wanted to show you what the new design of Hunt Highway will look like. Again, I know it's kind of hard to see, there's a lot of information here, but basically what is happening is with the reduction of this right-of-way, the sidewalk will now be five feet wi, sorry, six feet wide. And then you will have some landscaping area, you'll have the fifteen-foot landscape setback and no trail, which is being moved to the north side of Stacy Road, and then the property, the lot line. So whereas previously the, from the back of the sidewalk to the actual walls of the individual lots, there was about forty-five feet of distance, now there's less. Now there's at least thirty, about thirty-five feet of distance, which includes that landscape setback and the right-of-way. So in order to maintain that landscape setback and have a significant amount of landscaping still along Hunt Highway, that's the main reason why the trail was moved. And you can see the design here of one hundred and seventy-second Street, which includes the twelve-foot DG trail along, along that west side of the one hundred and seventy-second Street. And then here's the design of Stacy Road, which now includes a twelve-foot DG trail along the whole south side of Stacy Road, which is the north boundary of the, this thirty-eight lot subdivision. So that's basically it in a nutshell of what the applicant is proposing and, and just, just to go back just really quick, actually I don't need to go to that one. What will actually be amended is the condition of approval of the original ordinance, ordinance twenty-six eleven, which stated that the right-of-way was required to be at sixty-five feet. So the only way to change that was to do a PAD amendment and ask the council to amend that condition to stay fifty-five feet instead of sixty-five feet. So that's why you're seeing it as a PAD amendment before you. Otherwise, there really would be no need for a PAD amendment. Now, as a companion application to this project, it's lagging behind because this has to be, the amendment has to be approved first, is a preliminary plat, which includes all these changes that are taking place and changes, minor changes and modifications to the open space plan and walls and monument sign, just minor things, which staff will actually approve that administratively after the PAD amendment is reviewed by the council. There was a neighborhood meeting held for this on June the twelfth. We only had three people show up to the meeting and they expressed concerns, actually not, they weren't concerned with what the applicant was proposing, they were more concerned with, with traffic congestion or, or traffic calming measures along Hunt Highway, which, which really was, didn't really have much to do with what the applicant was proposing. They were supportive of, of what the applicant's proposing to do tonight. So staff recommends at this time that, based on the reasons that, that are stated in the staff report, that this PAD amendment, that you recommend if approval to the town council. And I'm not going to go over all these little conditions, we just carried over all the conditions from the originals, from the original ordinance, because that's what we're required to do. I know there's a lot of them. And that is, that concludes my presentation. If you have any questions, I'll, I would be happy to answer them.
All right, thank you. Does anybody have any comments or questions for staff at this time? Commissioner Johns.
Thank you, Keith. So the premises were moved in the path to the north, so there's not really a path going into the site to begin with on the, the neighboring, the east. I'm looking at the Google map, there's not really a path over there existing right now, is there? This is just a path for future, if they ever build it at another time. That's being implemented onto this project, right? It's a, I guess what I'm asking is, the path only happens here at this project, nowhere else around the, the area.
Chairman Anderson, Commissioner Johns, which path are you referring to exactly, though?
You're, the path that we're moving to the north along Stacy Road.
Okay.
And then, and then you have a connection that runs around one seventy-second and it connects to Unh.
I think I understand what you're asking now. So, so the, the DG trail, you're right.
DG trail.
Only exists in, right now in front of this subdivision, which will now be moved to the north to Stacy Road and then it will continue along Stacy further to, to the west eventually, in some ways, a reform.
If it ever does.
If it ever does.
Because there's two houses right there.
Right, it's, it's a county area. I, I don't know what's going to happen with that if the town decides to continue it to the west per their trails plan. I know there's supposed to be some type of connection to the west eventually, but I don't know what that's going to look like right now or where.
My final question is, is it's because of the county's trails plan that requires this path to even be here at all. I mean, we don't.
Say, say, sorry, excuse me, say it again.
It's the county's trail plan that requires this path to even be here at all because, or, or, or we're trying to appease the county's trail plan.
Chairman Anderson, Commissioner Johns. It's actually the, the town has a trail plan that shows a trail in that immediate area and this was just a way for the town to be able to continue that further to the east.
So it's the town.
I'm sorry, to the west, excuse me.
Okay, so now, now I'm with you. So I was wondering why the requirement, why we even had to do all this or just eliminate the path altogether, but it's part of the trail plan of the town, not the county.
Exactly.
And we can't push that onto the neighboring county, Maricopa County. And I, and I feel bad that the, the developer fell into McDott's, you know, undersight, I would say, so, and to come at this last, so I, I would approve what's happening with this and, yeah, hopefully they're, they're not able to lose too much time, so, thank you. this, and, yeah, hopefully they're not able to lose too much time, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Smith, did you have something? All right, thank you. Is the applicant here, and would they wish to address the commission on anything? Oh, okay. I do have a card here from Terry Hulse, who would like to speak. Terry, are you here? I'm sorry? Terry Hulse, H-U-L-S-E. And if you just state your name and city of residence, and you'll have three minutes.
Terry Hulse, I live in the town of Gilbert, just to the northwest of this subdivision, and I have a couple of questions, and maybe they're for Keith, but my concerns are as follows. So Stacy Road, just north of the subdivision where they're relocating the trail, is a dirt road. We've been told that as a result of this subdivision, that becomes part of the town of Gilbert and no longer county. It is unpaved, we're not aware of any plans to pave it. Right now, just south on Hunt Highway, I don't know if you guys study traffic patterns, but after 5:00, the traffic that passes this subdivision to go further out into Santan is dead stopped, so people will likely divert onto Stacy Road and circle back around, and I want to understand the plans for a potential paving of that road, because right now, as a dirt road, given rain and other conditions, I think it could be hazardous, and two, it's not built for that kind of traffic and erosion, and we've already seen erosion of Stacy Road as a result of the construction of this property based upon their trucks going back and forth. So want to learn a little bit more about that.
Okay, thank you. Do you have anything more?
No, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Keith, can you address any of her questions, please?
Chairman Anderson, if I'm not mistaken, I appreciate you coming to speak tonight. If I'm not mistaken, Stacy Road will be developed, their half-street will be developed with this project, if I'm correct, or no? Maybe that's something the applicant can further address, but... What's a payment in lieu? So, so basically, if, the applicant is going to be putting down a, some type of cash bond or some type of payment in lieu to where this right-of-way along Stacy, the half-street of right-of-way will be, eventually be constructed. I don't know at which point that will be constructed, I guess that would be determined by development patterns in the area and by the town, I'm not exactly sure, but...
That is actually owned by the town of Gilbert. Not as right-of-way as it's like owned by the Stacy Road.
Okay, so the applicant is telling me that Stacy Road is actually owned by the town of Gilbert. I don't, because, because we have zoned it to the county line, which is, should be on the north side of Stacy Road. So apparently, I guess it's owned by the town of Gilbert, and I don't know when that will be constructed. We can try and find that information out and maybe get back with you as to when the timing of that would take place, but I, I'm, I'm not sure exactly when it will be constructed.
Did anybody else have any more questions for staff? Okay, so at this time, we'll close the public hearing and bring it up the dais for discussion. If there's no discussion, does anybody want to take a stab at a...
No discussion whatsoever, huh?
I left it up to you guys, nobody wanted to talk.
Right, well, I'll go ahead and I'll make the motion to approve item number 18, Z18-25, Copper Bend, to suggest to town council.
Okay, so recommended approval by Commissioner Johns, is there a second?
Second.
Got a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, say no. Motion carries. Move along to item 19, UP 1819, Happy Pets Royal Palace, Josh.
Thank you, Chairman Anderson. Commission, this is UP 1819, Happy Pets Royal Palace. This is a conditional use permit for the overnight boarding and daycare for small dogs, or as classified in our land development code, animal services kennel, in a community commercial zoning district. This is located on the northeast corner of Val Vista and Elliott Road, is the northern part of this seven-acre commercial development. And this is just a, just a little overview of the surroundings. Right behind it is the Val Vista Meadows Residential Community, and across the six-lane Val Vista Drive is the Manners Residential Community. And the proposed site for the, the facility is actually in one of these, this is a multi-tenant building, it actually holds three tenants. To the north approximately is a gym, the, this, this facility is in the middle, and then to the south, the tenant is a mattress retail store, just to give you a little insight. Just to also give you a little insight into the proposed business, just the business plan, this is just an overview of what will happen inside. I do want to let the commission know that this business will only offer services inside the building, there will not be any outdoor dog runs, any outdoor dog walks, everything will be contained completely inside this suite. They even have an indoor, I want to call it a bathroom, but I don't think it would be called a bathroom, of animal waste area for the animals, and then you have the, the playroom, slumber room, so on and so forth. Just a little overview, they are open, they're proposing to open between, to the public between 6:00 AM, 7:00 PM, they are open seven days a week, 24 hours a day, they're staffed, I apologize, they're staffed 365 days a year, 24 hours a day, seven days a week. The requirement, the internal requirement for this business is that they won't accept any animals or dogs that weigh more than 20 pounds, full grown. Our land development code does not have these restrictions, that's just an internal, that's part of their business model, they cater to more the tiny, I guess, frou-frou dogs, I guess you could say. As I mentioned, for the noise control, this is an inside-only facility, no services will be rendered outside. For the smell control, there, the applicant will be double-bagging the waste and throwing the waste out in the back in the dumpster out back, which is picked up weekly. And then according to the applicant, the average daily, I guess, population of the amount of dogs that are watched by staff is between 25 and 35, and it peaks between 35 and 45 during holidays. So the only, since there is no outdoor, any outdoor facilities for this, the only requirement in the LDC for the animal services is that the indoor kennel cannot be any closer than 25 feet to a property line, and as this slide illustrates, they exceed that in, in all aspects. And then this is just to give a little more on-the-ground, I guess, view of what the facility looks like, the applicant provided this to staff, just to help you orient in what it looks like. For a conditional use permit, there are four findings, just real quick. The first finding is that the proposed use will not be detrimental to the health, safety, or general welfare of people living or working in the area. As mentioned, the exterior of the building, it's not going to be changed in any way other than, you know, potential future signage, which would be approved under a, under a different permit, no outdoor dog runs, staff will be on-site 24 hours a day, seven days a week, all year round, and then they have the double-bagged animal waste. Finding two is that the proposed use conforms to the intent of the general plan and zoning. The purpose of this community commercial land use designation is for neighborhood-type services, and this does satisfy and fit in with that general plan. Third finding is that the proposed use conforms to the conditions, requirements of the zoning code and any state or federal regulations. Staff's analysis is that it does conform to all the regulations set forth in the commercial districts, the section for commercial districts, and then also for animal services. The Elliott Ranch Plaza zoning ordinance, it also complies with that, and then also the applicant is aware of the Gilbert municipal code's stipulations for animal noise, nuisance and waste, they are aware and are fully willing to comply with those. And then the last condition for this use permit is that the proposed use does not interfere with the use of the, you know, or enjoyment of nearby facilities. As I mentioned in that previous slide, they are setback more than what's required by code. The residential units are additionally buffered by open space landscape tracks, and then the residential to the west is buffered, you know, by a six-lane arterial road, so there is pretty significant buffering, and then of course, keeping the entire use inside does add to the mitigation of any potential noise, any noise issues. So just with that in mind, staff finds that UP 1819, Happy Pets Royal Palace does meet all four of those findings, and we do recommend to the commission approval of this use permit with just the, the condition that the project adheres to the site plan and landscape plan and exterior elevation that have already been approved, basically no changes be made on the exterior.
All right, thank you, Josh. Does anybody on dais have any questions or comments for staff?
So this is a boarding facility then, right?
Chairman Anderson, Commissioner Smith, yes, this is a, an indoor boarding facility. They go from, they offer services just for daily daycare if customers want to just drop it off while they're working, so they're not so lonely, or they do also offer the overnight, but as I mentioned, there will be staff on-site 24 hours a day.
Well, I think we'd want to make sure that it's not a kennel, per se, but that it's a short-term facility, am I right in that assumption?
In the land development code, the, the use that's actually set forth closely, more closely aligns with what is set forth for kennel in our, in our code. So that's why I had mentioned that, a kennel.
Thank you, anyone else? Commissioner Johns.
Thank you, Josh. I think it's discrimination against dogs over 20 pounds, but I have dogs over 20 pounds. I would verify, or I'd like to verify that if this is overnight, then it is boarding, does it still meet all those facts of finding, and does it still meet the requirements? Because when you were first explaining it, you were saying it's like a doggy daycare. Now, now it's overnight, so that takes a hold of, to another realm of requirements, so if staff feels it meets those requirements, then I support what they're doing here, but... And they do have, it looks like they have a lot of double gates and everything, and so they've done their security, but if they do have overnight stays, they're going to need, I don't see kennels or things along that line, so, but that's more operations than use. Yeah, definitely look into the boarding, makes it go in, and overnight kicks it in boarding, which is a whole nother requirement, both code and ordinance, so...
Chairman Anderson, Commissioner John, staff did look into that, and there's, there's no distinction, that staff found that distinguishes between overnight and just daycare boarding, it's just, it's classified as...
And also, is there any requirements to be a certain distance away from any other restaurants or anything along that line? I don't know if Gilbert does, Phoenix does, Mesa does, and there are restaurants a little bit further down, so that'd be another thing I'd check into.
In our, in our code, the only requirement is that the internal, in interior, I apologize, boarding facility shall not be any closer than 25 feet to the property line, and it is actually from the beginning of where their suite, I have estimated that it's about 35 feet, there is a restaurant, there's one suite right here, and then the Rosati's Pizza, I believe it is, so I, there's no code requirements that require that, at least in our code, but they are at least 50 feet away from the closest restaurant.
Yeah, I think Phoenix is like 150 to the nearest restaurant, but, you know, if it's not in the code, then yeah, there you go. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Yeah, a quick question, was there any opposition from the neighbors, or did anybody voice any opinion within that adjacent vicinity, that neighborhood?
Chairman Anderson, Commissioner Safrontes, there has not been any contact with staff from the neighbors, staff has not received any input at all up until about 5:00 today when I left my desk.
Thank you, yeah, I've frequented that strip center a lot, and I know that those spaces on the north portion of the parcel have been vacant for a while, so it's good to see something finally coming in.
Commissioner Frelick.
One quick question, you had made mention in terms of taking care of the smells and double-bagging and all that stuff, how do they clean the facility itself, the indoor
Chairman Anderson, Commissioner Frelick, I am not sure, I believe the applicant could better express how that is done, but I personally do not have that information.
Because my only concern would be, and again, if they're aware of the codes and they have to abide by those codes, then I'm sure they have it figured out, but just in terms of, you know, that they're, they're not spraying this place out so that it gets outside, as long as they're containing the smells, I'm, I'm fine with it.
I do have a question for you, it sounds like there's no concerns for sound outside the building, but the space is right in the middle of this strip center, so they're going to have tenants on each side of them. Has there been any thought into how they're going to mitigate the sound from traveling through demising walls to the surrounding tenants and...
Staff, Chairman Anderson, staff, I was speaking with the applicant, and this gym on the north side, according to the applicant, and she can better explain this, but they are known to play, you know, music, and it's, so they don't have any noise issues. As to the, the neighbors to the south, I do not have any information on any internal insulation that they'd be putting in.
Okay, thank you. For good, is the applicant here, and would they like to address anything, come on up? Just state your name and city of residence, and you'll have 10 minutes for your presentation.
Hi, my name is Linda Huss, well, I live in Mesa, Arizona, and we are very happy to be opening up Happy Pets Royal Palace in Gilbert. We do have a location already in operation that does accommodate all-size dogs, and that is in Mesa, we're opening another facility in Chandler. My background comes from being a franchisee with a camp bawa organization, where I opened and built a building from ground up, and that was in Bentonville, Arkansas, home to Walmart. And we are planning to be longtime residents for Gilbert. We're very excited about the possibility of expansion in your town, and as far as addressing the question that you had for the cleaning, we do have a kivak system, which is like a central wet/dry vac system, but kind of more particular for our industry. We are an award-winning facility, we're very particular with our cleaning and care for the dogs as well as safety. So this facility is particular for the very tiny dogs, probably ranging from two pounds as being the smallest, my smallest dog is three and a half pounds, and not to exceed 20 pounds, and that's just to provide the smaller dogs an environment where they feel safe, where they can play. Oh, and we do have overnight boarding, and that is also staffed 24/7, it is a slumber-style sleep, unless a dog doesn't do well in slumber style, then they could have a private little Were there any other questions?
Is anybody have anything else? I think we're good, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
And I did have a comment card, but it was from Linda Huss, and you're not going to double dip, so I think you just had your opportunity to speak. Thank you so much for your time, appreciate it. So at this time, is there any questions for staff? No? Okay, so I'll close the public hearing and bring the discussion back up to the dais. Anyone have anything they want to say? Doesn't sound like it, but I'm going to say, welcome to the town. I hope you're very successful there, and looking forward to it. So at this time, does anybody want to make a recommendation?
Chairman, I'd like to recommend that we approve a conditional use permit UP 18-19 for the Happy Pets Royal Palace.
Okay, so we have recommendation for approval from Vice Chair Bloomfield. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Frolik. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item will be item, we can do 20 and 21 at the same time, correct? Okay, so we'll do 20 and 21 at the same time. It's S17-1008 and DR 18-92 Mosaic at Layton Lakes. Nathan, please.
Thank you, Chairman Anderson. For some of your new faces, this was a project that we reviewed last month and got continued until this month in order for the applicant to work with the neighborhood on a number of issues. So it's back before you tonight, but I will try and go through it somewhat briefly, I guess. Layton Lakes Parcel 3, it's just under 19 acres, located in the southwest corner of Layton Lakes Boulevard and Queen Creek, excuse me, Lindsay, just north of Queen Creek here. And then you could see it's one of the last remaining undeveloped parcels in the town. The parcel to the south here, this is Layton Lakes Parcel 4, was recently rezoned. So items 20, 21 subdivision plat, that's the one we're talking about now, I guess we're talking about them together. S17-08-1008 is the preliminary plat and open space plan, so that's things like site design, landscaping, amenities, open space, all those walls, all those things. And then the DR case is primarily the building elevations for all the buildings that are proposed, floor plans, colors and materials. So just wanted to clarify what each was. History, again, the Layton Lakes PAD was created in 2001, and so we, not much has happened on this piece of property until recently. The applicant came in about a year ago, was considering rezoning it to a more conventional SFD zoning district. Through the review process, they decided to abandon that rezoning, withdraw that rezoning, and fall under their development rights of the Layton Lakes PAD, which requires them to do a subdivision plat, preliminary plat, open space plan. And because these are for sale products, they have building elevations that we will approve as well, and the plat, because it's for sale. So, like I said, it got continued last month at this public hearing, and they worked with the neighbors. We met with a few neighbors and then somewhat at the town hall, and then we also had a more formal, the applicant had a more formal neighborhood meeting on September 25th, so I think it was last week. And the results of that are in your staff report. I think there are about seven items that came up, and I can review them, but kind of what those items were, as well as the applicant's response, what changes were made are outlined in your report. So again, parcel three is just under 19 acres. It was designated for residential townhome development by the original Layton Lakes PAD, got reclassified to SFD, essentially in name only. In 2005, when we updated our land development code from the old code to the new code, and every zoning district in the town got reclassified to a new use district name. Again, I went over the rezoning that was withdrawn. So the Layton Lakes PAD allotted for up to 226 units. They're requesting 222. And there are three different building types, 62 total buildings. The flats, backyard towns, row towns, we can go through those, the elevations and the locations of each on the site plan, but it's a gated community with two points of access. These are primarily alley-loaded product, and there are significant amounts of open space, well in excess of what's required. This is Layton Lakes PAD documentation here, that'll show you kind of this parcel being residential townhome and their, and where its location is. This is a table from that as well, that kind of demonstrates townhomes up to 226 units. And this is a conceptual development plan that is in the Layton Lakes PAD. They don't have to build this exactly, but this was a concept design. And so the applicant decided to kind of go a different route in their site design, which we can review, obviously. The only things I would mention that are similar is their access points, their primary off of Layton Lakes Boulevard here to the north, and their secondary off of Lindsay. So those were shown. Obviously, the footprint of the parcel, the same, it's just how the site is designed is different with what the applicant is now proposing, which is this. So if you could see, yeah, the orange, these are row towns, and you can see the number there, of buildings there, primarily at the focal point, the entry. These are flats, these yellow buildings here that are more in the central portion and scattered a few other places. Backyard towns, which are, the name kind of, kind of indicates that it has a little bit more of a backyard or a patio yard to it, are located in the south and around the perimeter to the north. The refuse, the trash compactor is located along Lindsay Road. That was something that the applicant worked with the neighbors or discussed with the neighbors, but decided that they wanted to leave it at this location, keep it away from the open space and trails to the south, which was recommended. They did. One comment was to add turf to this area, make it somewhat active, whether that be for dogs or people to walk. But the applicant was able to add about 4,500 square feet of turf to that area, which our water conservation department has looked at and approved of. Oh, I would mention, one of the things that was mentioned was there was a lot of, a number of mesquite trees kind of located along the southwestern portion of this. Some of the neighbors wanted those to be switched out to kind of a less destructive or invasive tree type, and they did that. They've replaced with, I think, live oak and, like, pistache out the look. That's in my notes. This is the wall plan. I'm showing it to you because one other change that was made was this was originally a two-foot CMU and four-foot view fence. Neighbors would have liked that to be a little bit more or less open, so it's now four feet of CMU and two foot of view fence all along Layton Lakes Boulevard. That change has been made. You can kind of see what that looks like now here in this section of wall. This is the main entry gate, what it'll look like from above, as well as looking from street view. Secondary access gate off of Lindsay here. It'll be fully improved to this point, and then the gate located further to the north. That's the entry monumentation. They also have a number of amenities. This is the pool area. You can kind of see what that looks like from a street view, but they have pool, restrooms, and hot tub, those types of things. This is the tot lot that's shaded. Tot lot's on the southern portion. You can see kind of front end parking here. And then this is the open space located along the northwest. It's kind of a ropes boulder, of course, for this one. So what this graphic demonstrates is kind of the distribution of building types. So as I mentioned, there's three building types. So what we need in reality, when someone gets a building permit, as this, if this were to develop, were to be, where are each building types going, or what? We ask for a number of things like diversity of colors and materials and architectural design of each building, so that not all buildings look the same. So this is a matrix that kind of demonstrates which color scheme goes where, which building goes where, so that it's very clear to us, as well as folks like planner viewers of which building will be constructed where. So that's important to have. This is the phasing plan, and what this really is saying is we're going to, they're going to put in all the landscape, hardscape, streets, those types of things, and then each building will be developed in pods. So all these items are broken into pods. You could see if this, any one of these buildings were purchased or a unit in this, then all of these buildings would be built in that phase. Conversely, this is just one building, that is, that would be the only building built in that phase. So you can kind of see how that breaks down. And this is a list of the items that came up at the neighborhood meeting, as well as in meetings with the neighborhood. As I said, the trees, the partial view wall, those changes have been made, adding more turf to the northeast corner of the site. Visual appeal of the main entry as you come into the site, the applicant chose to just utilize their entry monumentation for that, and felt as though they didn't need to make too many changes interior to the gate to address that. They, as I mentioned, they want to leave the trash compactor in its current location. The recycling component was brought up. They're not offering recycling with this. It's not a requirement of the town public works department to offer that at this time with this. So they chose not to add a recycling compactor or something along those lines that would enable to order, offer recycling. And then guest parking was a big issue that came up with the neighbors. The multifamily standards were used, the multifamily uses parking requirements for guest parking and building parking. Regarding guest parking, each one of these units, as we talked about, will have two-car garage. They don't have driveways, because a driveway has to be at least 20 feet, so nothing in between. You either have a three-foot apron or a 20-foot driveway. Guest parking requirements are 56 spaces for this, this subdivision, and the applicant is providing 73. They found seven more spaces based on kind of engineering requirements of site visibility and where a parking space can be. You can, we reviewed the site plan, and, you know, there's, most of it's on-street parking, whether it's parallel or front-end parking and near some of those amenity areas. So with that, we, as we mentioned last month, we're supportive of the preliminary plat application. This is just the recommendation for the subdivision plat, but we're also supportive of the design review application. So I can go through those elevations. I need to get out of this, but PowerPoint, but any questions, be happy to answer.
Thank you, Nathan. Does anybody have any comments, questions for staff?
So just a quick question that I have for you. On the burial board, each scheme seems to have two different types of roof types, an S-type and a flat tile, that just.
Yeah.
They have either, they can select either one of those roofs with whatever color scheme they're going with. That's the purpose of that, right?
Yeah, it's, Chairman Anderson, it is broken down, so each one, that's in my other PowerPoint, each one has a, there's one through six color schemes, and then on this matrix, it's broken down into which building will have which color scheme and roof tile and those types of things. So it's, it's well broken down in this.
Okay. Essentially, it gives the owner pretty good diversity of whatever they want to select.
Correct. When it originally came in, it was all S-tile roofs. We felt, and I think you supported us on that at the study session, that they should have a diversity of roof tiles, because, you know, based on their architectural themes, both tiles could work.
Okay, thank you. No questions or comments? Okay, thank you, Nathan.
Thanks.
Is the applicant here, would they like to give a presentation? Just state your name, city, residence, and you'll have 10 minutes.
Chairman, members of the commission, Cameron Carter with the Rose Law Group on behalf of the New Home Company. I have a presentation. It's more detailed. I think Nathan's done a great job articulating the history of the project, where we've been and where we are today, and the changes that were made. I just want to stand and thank staff for the work that they've done. Thank, I know that there are some neighbors who are here tonight who we've been working with. The New Home Company is excited to bring the project forward in the town of Gilbert. We've worked very hard to comply with the town's codes and requirements, and we feel the proposed project does that. We've also worked very hard, especially over the last month with neighbors, to try and accommodate, to listen, to understand the questions and concerns, requests that they made, and then to accommodate what we could. And so I can give my more detailed presentation if you'd like. I think Nathan has articulated those things, but otherwise, unless there are questions, be happy to forego that if it's the commission's pleasure.
Okay. Does anybody on the commission feel they need, want to see the full presentation or comments for applicant right now? Questions? Okay, thank you. I do have one comment card here. It says, "I do not wish to speak, but in the comments, please give my minister Tripp McKinnon." That's from Catherine Miller. So is there a Tripp McKinnon here, and do they wish to address the commission? No? Okay. Do you want to say anything? No? Okay, thank you. Do you want to go on record for opposing, or? No? Okay, thank you. All right, so do we need to bring Nathan back up? Okay, so we'll close the public hearing right now, bring discussion back up the dais. Does anybody want to say anything? Commissioner Frolik.
I just want to thank the neighbors for coming out last month, and I do want to thank the applicant for listening to the neighbors and going to those meetings and accommodating quite a few of these things that they asked for, and I do appreciate that. And I think, I think it's a good project, and I do think it's important, too. I was concerned about the parking, even though you had already met the requirements. You've gone and added an additional seven spaces, so I appreciate that as well. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Well, I missed last month's hearing, but I heard it was a good one.
You might have been grateful that you missed last month's hearing. It was a long one. Interesting, though.
Okay, so if there's nothing more to be said, let's entertain a recommendation for item 20, S17-1008.
Chairman. I do want to make a comment that, thank, I want to thank the applicant for participating in the process and working with the neighbors and listeners and making the accommodations where you could. Appreciate that. And grateful for the neighbors for participating in the process as well. It turned out, we, I am very excited for the project as well, so I look forward to having the New Home Company start this project and get it underway. And in that, in that regard, I would like to recommend approval of zoning case S, excuse me, preliminary plat approval for case S17-1008 Mosaic at Layton Lakes.
So we have recommendation for approval from Vice Chair Bloomfield. Is there a second?
I'll say it.
Second by Commissioner Johns. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say no. Motion carries. We'll move along to item 21, DR 18-92. Does anybody want to make a motion?
Chairman, I'll continue. Move to approve design review component for Mosaic at Layton Lakes, case number DR 18-92. Recommend approval.
Motion for approval by Vice Chair Bloomfield. Is there a second? Second from Commissioner Lee. All in favor, say aye. Smith, I'm sorry. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say no. DR 18-92 is approved. Move along to item 22, GP 18-07, and item 23, Z18-11. Keith.
Chairman Anderson, members of the commission. The next case that I have for you tonight, before you, is for a general plan, minor general plan amendment and a rezone, PAD rezone for the Andalucia Villas project. The project is located at the southwest corner of Val Vista and Ray, and you can see it there on the site. Superimposed the graphic in there for you. It's approximately 1.2 miles southeast of the Santana Village Shopping Center, and about two miles to the north, I have south on here, but the freeway is about two miles to the south of this project, the Loop 202 freeway. miles to the south of this project, the Loop Two-O-Two freeway. So, just a few, just an overview of some site details, um, the site's about fourteen point two seven acres, and gross acres in size, about twelve acres net. The request tonight, which we'll go over just a little bit more in detail, is for a minor general plan amendment from shopping center to, to residential of, in the range between five to eight dwelling units per acre. The total density of the project will be, uh, seven point zero eight dwelling units per acre. The request for the zone change is to change the zoning from shopping center to single-family detached residential with a planned area development overlay. And I will go into detail in a few minutes here as to why they're proposing, um, a PAD As far as the general plan is concerned, as I stated, they're proposing to change the general plan designation, designation on the site from shopping center to five to eight dwelling units per acre. And I just wanted to show you the land use map here on the, on the site, I know it's, you can see it there where it says the, the proposed density range. And a few of the goals and the policies that, to, to show to you that they're in compliance with this proposed general plan designation are, um, that they are proposing to maintain a, or meet this policy one point one, to maintain a balance of housing types and provide a variety even, um, well, the main thing is provide a variety of housing types. Policy one point three is to add to the variety of housing. So, staff, as we, as we have analyzed the general plan compliance with this, um, we, this is a housing type that we feel fits these goals, that, that complies with these goals, because it's a housing type that doesn't exist in the immediate area. Market conditions and development patterns have changed over the years in this area, as I'm sure the applicant will probably explain in a few minutes, this proj- property has actually sat vacant for, for many, many years, it's never been developed, it was originally zoned, um, a shopping center upon the original development and zoning of the, of the Ashland Ranch community, which surrounds it, uh, to the south and west. They have never, they have, due to the development patterns in the area, and all of the commercial moving south towards the freeway and, and east towards the, the Two-O-Two freeway where Santana Mall is, and you see all the commercial, it has kind of rendered this property as a, as a, as a parcel where retail doesn't, uh, has not been very viable, and they've had a hard time attracting retail users for this property. So, you can see that the development patterns in the area have changed over the years. And, the increased density is necessary to provide for, um, a diversity of housing types for current and future town residents, and to create new and innovative housing opportunities, and to support the, this new density, this housing, additional dwelling units, to su- will support the town's thriving commercial development activity in, in that immediate area, which there is a lot of it in that immediate area. So, as far as the proposed development plan is concerned, I already stated that it's a little over fourteen acres gross, they're proposing to construct one hundred and one lots of single-family for-sale homes, all detached units, um, seven point eight dwelling, seven point zero eight dwelling units per acre, which is at the higher end of the five to eight, uh, land use designation for, that they are proposing for the general plan on this property. All the streets in the neighborhood will be private, there'll be twenty-six foot wide private street sections with a sidewalk, a four-foot sidewalk on one side, and the travel lanes, uh, for the rest, including, um, cobblestone streets, I'm sure the applicant will go over more detail concerning that in a few moments. The dry, each home site will provide a twenty-foot driveway, and they'll also have a two-car garage. There will be three point four acres of open space, which equates to about twenty-nine percent of the, of the whole, of the project area, which is actually exceeding the minimum requirement that the town requires of ten percent, and they're, they're over that by almost twenty percent. There are, all the homes in this development are proposed to be two stories, no single-story homes in this development. But you will notice that, um, I'll show you a street scene here in just a second, but you'll see, uh, a, a kind of a deta-, it's, it's an accessory structure or building in the front, along the, the street frontage, that is, that is a single-story element, it's the only single-story element that, that these homes will have an option to build, and I'll show you that in just a second. The, the development has perimeter landscape buffer all the way around, and there's some spots where this buffer, um, if you notice on the west side of the property, the buffer is, the, the smallest point is about, is about thirty-three feet from, from the homes, if you see on that north side, the lot number one, about thirty-three feet from that home to the nearest lot to the west, but the majority of that buffer is much wider along that western property line. And along the sou- southern property line, on the far east side, it gets down to about twenty-seven feet wide from the adjacent lots' wall, this lot to the south, to the, the, the lot wall of the closest home. And that's only for about half of that, that boundary line. So, you can see that they're providing, uh, significant landscaping around the perimeter in the west and south for buffers, and there's also significant landscaping that will be provided along Ray Road and along Val Vista as well. I wanted to show you, uh, really quick, the private lot, the lot diagram, so the lots, each lot will be about thirty-three feet wide by eighty feet deep, and you can see on here that the setbacks that they're proposing, and I'll go over those deviations in just a little bit, they're proposing a zero-foot setback on the sides, and five-foot at the rear, and a three-foot at the front, and I can go over that in a little more detail in just a minute. And I hope you can see this graphic that's on the screen to the right, that kind of shows in a little bit more detail of, of what that street section will look like to a certain extent, and the lots, and the homes, and how they kind of fit on each lot. So, there will be private outdoor space and a use and benefit easement on the site to the, i- if you're looking at it from your view, it's to the right side of each home, and that use and benefit easement will be about five feet wide. Each lot unit will have a twenty-foot garage and driveway, the front yard faces private, the private street. Their optional accessory structure, which they're calling a bonus room, um, is at the front of each lot, and only about half of the lots, roughly half, maybe more than that, will be allowed to, will be able to accommodate this bonus room, which is an option that homeowners can choose, it's not a standard option. And the applicant, I'm sure, will go into more detail on that. The AC mechanicals are located at the rear yard, and, um, so they are requesting some deviations, and I'll go over those in just a minute. Here's the, here's the conceptual street scene I wanted to show you. So, you can see the bone, the, the, what the applicant's calling a bonus room, and we're calling a, a detached structure here in the front, where I'm moving my arrow around on the screen. And you can see that it is the only, it's a single-story element, whereas the rest of the home is two stories. The architectural design, as of right now, it's, this is a conceptual design, we have not reviewed, um, any of the designs of these homes and, um, at all through a standard plan process, which, that will come later. So, this is conceptual, just wanted to show it to you, so you can kind of see the, the presence of the bonus rooms in the front of the house, and how it will provide a, a kind of unique, uh, architectural movement in the streetscape, and project, um, what that would look like as residents drive up and down these streets. And you can kind of see the, the, what they are proposing in the future for a kind of a Spanish architectural theme, you kind of get the feel for, for the streetscape and the street scene here. Just really quickly, wanted to show you the amenity and main entrance plan, you can see in, in the middle, in that development plan I showed you a minute ago, they have a, an amenity in the middle, kind of towards the northwest side, uh, which, which provides a pool and a little cabana, and a totlot, and a little grass area. And then in the southwest section of the property, it has a, a grassy area that's a retention basin, but that can also be used as kind of an open space area as well. And then you see the entry, the main entry has, has significant landscaping and trees as you enter the subdivision. There is only, there's two ways to get in and out of this subdivision, as, as you saw on the development plan, one entrance off of Ray Road and one off of Val Vista, which is the, Val Vista Road is the main entrance. Monuments and walls, you can see the Spanish architectural theme incorporated into the design of these walls and this monument, and this entryway feature, um, stone, um, veneer and stucco, and some unique, uh, Spanish theming and, and landscaping as well will be incorporated into it. The wall plan, I mean, you can see on the wall plan, it shows a primary theme wall along, along Val Vista, um, and they, and kind of a secondary type wall plant, wall along, uh, Ray, but in the cer- in front of the parking stalls. But a lot of the fencing in this neighborhood, uh, will be adjacent to trails and open space corridors, so you'll see a lot of view fencing on the interior. And that view fencing is a partial view fence, so it's four foot of block, uh, four foot of block and two foot of wrought iron on top. Eyes on the trails is the goal here for these view fences. The parking plan, I know there was some concern at the study session about, and there was a question about parking along these streets, as it's a kind of a, a more narrow cross-section than, than what is typical in a residential neighborhood, but these streets are private, and I just wanted to reiterate that no parking will be allowed in front of the homes on the street. Uh, you can see all the parking for guests and so forth, which there's about fifty-eight guest parking stalls, will be located and highlighted in red, there's some parallel stalls, and then you'll see some regular guest parking stalls in front of the, the pool area and the amenity area and along other port, and in other portions of the So, the deviations, the applicant is proposing, uh, four deviations, or actually three main deviations. The, the deviation, um, the, the three main deviations that I wanted to talk to you about tonight are, um, number one is the front building setback. The front building setback, the applicant is proposing to deviate from ten feet, which is required per, in the LDC, to three feet. Now, this deviation is, is only being proposed by the applicant to accommodate, if, for, for lots that have the detached accessory structure along the street. If it was not for the detached accessory structure along the street, they would not be requesting a deviation before you tonight. So, that is the reason for the deviation request, um, is for that accessory structure, so that it can, it will actually fit on the lot, um, and it will be setback three feet, is what they're proposing from that front property line. The next deviation is for the rear yard setback. That deviation for the rear yard setback is for five feet, which ten feet is required per the, per the land development code, excuse me. The, the rationale behind this deviation, from the applicant's perspective, is, um, the rear yard setback is, is so that, that's where the mechanical equipment will be located on the lot. Typically, you see in residential, single-family homes, all the mechanical equipment is on the side, and the rear yard space is used for, is larger, substantially larger, where people have all their, um, patio tables and chairs and things, and it's kind of their little open, on-lot open space. The applicant's proposing to take that rear yard area and shift it to the side yard instead of on the rear yard, so that's why they're proposing a five-foot setback on the side. So, you'll see these lots will have a five-foot setback on one side and a zero-foot setback on the other. But they're not requesting a side yard setback deviation because they already meet the side yard setback requirements, but, so it's just for the rear yard. Another deviation they're, they're proposing is for sixty-five percent lot coverage for two-story homes. In the land development code, a maximum lot coverage of fifty percent is required for two-story homes. The applicant is proposing, uh, sixty-five percent. According to the applicant, each proposed home will cover the majority of the lot in order to provide the private livable outdoor open space in the required side yard. The applicant is also stating that sixty-five percent lot coverage is only needed for homes that will have the optional accessory structure or the bonus room. If you, then your staff report, I did not include this in my pres- in the presentation, but there is a table in your staff report that provides a breakdown of the single, or the single-story square footage of all the plans that they are proposing, and what the lot coverage would be if they did not have the bonus room, and the lot coverage if they are proposing to build the bonus room. So, if you looked at that table in the, in the staff report, it would show that they only need about fifty-three percent lot coverage for lots that do not have the bonus room. If they have the bonus room, they will need, um, about sixty-two percent, but the applicant is requesting a little bit of, uh, devi- a little bit of wiggle room, uh, up to sixty-five percent lot coverage. And then there's one other deviation that I wanted to, to quickly discuss, and I, and I failed to put it in this table, I don't know how that happened, but, and that's for, um, it's in the table in your staff report, however, and that is for the deviation for, um, minimum lot area. Minimum lot area is required to be three thousand square feet in the SFD zoning district, but it's actually, um, they're requiring twenty, they're asking for a deviation of two thousand six hundred and ten square feet, uh, for their minimum lot area, and that is due to the fact, and the applicant is stating that should be, these homes are kind of considered, if you will, a detached townhome, and they only need twenty-six, ten square feet, because each lot, the square footage of each home is, will wrap the building and, and will be able to provide that private open space area. The applicant suggests that the lot size is of twenty-six, ten is appropriate for an innovative residential, uh, project such as this, um, in the higher density range of the general plan. So, prior, before going into this neighborhood meeting stuff, um, the town staff has met with the applicant, uh, to discuss the proposed deviations and, and the concerns that the planning commission had had at the, the study session a month ago. And the deviation that the applicant, uh, has decided to modify is the request for the maximum lot coverage. They were originally were proposing seventy-five percent, but staff has received the numbers of square footage for the ground floor level of all these, of all the units, and it was determined that they only needed about sixty-five percent lot coverage. The, the other deviations for rear and front setbacks and the minimum lot area will, will stay the same as previously proposed. Staff is, is, is in support of these deviations, as there really isn't a, a lot, a zoning district in the town that kind of fits the product that the applicant is proposing. It's a unique, kind of a unique product to a certain extent, it's single-family, it's attached homes. The, the, there, at three thousand square feet, there, which is the required minimum lot size of this develop, of the, that's required per the SFD zoning district, is what fits, is what the applicant needs more than anything else. The closest zoning category that the town has where this could work or it could fit is, is SFA. However, the SFA zoning district requires that all units be attached, and the applicant is proposing to detach these units and not attach them. So, the town is in support of these deviations due to the fact that we don't have a zoning district that would fit or accommodate what the applicant is proposing to do here. So, there was, um, the applicant held a neighborhood meeting for the project, had actually had three neighborhood meetings that, that the town was made aware of, they've stated that they've held a few more neighborhood meetings since after the last neighborhood meeting, or in between. The three neighborhood meetings that we have been aware of, on January twenty-ninth, they held a neighborhood meeting, um, where there were one hundred and five attendees at the neighborhood meeting. February twentieth, they held a second neighborhood meeting where they invited sixteen homeowners that live immediately adjacent to the project along the south and west boundaries, and they discussed specific design issues and tried to, tried to, um, address concerns of the... discussed specific design issues and tried to, tried to address concerns of those 16 surrounding property owners. The last neighborhood meeting that we were aware of is on February 27th, and there was about 50 attendees, and it was held at the same location as the first neighborhood meeting. So there was half the attendees showed up to that meeting and expressed a lot of the same concerns. Some of the concerns that were expressed by the surrounding neighbors, and you can read those on the screen, increased traffic volumes along Val Vista and Ray, the location of proposed access points, which there are two of them. They were concerned with, with the increased density of 101 lots immediately adjacent to much larger zoned SF8 lots. The access and potential negative impacts on Ashland Ranch Community Parks was another concern. Visual impact of two-story homes immediately adjacent to the north of, of their homes. Noise impacts of potential, of the potential park in the southwest corner. They were concerned with noise impacts concerning the trail proposed along the south boundary. They expressed, also expressed concerns about their current housing values would be lowered due to a more dense residential product. And they also expressed concerns about potential increase in students to the Ashland Ranch Elementary School. So those were the concerns that the neighbors expressed. I am positive that the applicant will probably go into more detail concerning how they have attempted to address those concerns. But as of that, now, this concludes my presentation, and staff does recommend approval of the general plan amendment, the minor general plan amendment from shopping center to residential five-to-eight dwelling units per acre. And we also are recommending approval of the zone change, the PAD zone change from shopping center to SFD. And that concludes my presentation. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. I know the applicant is, is here and has their presentation, as I've stated multiple times, so that concludes mine.
Okay, thank you. That was a very in-depth presentation. Does anybody have any comments or questions for staff right now? Let me go with Commissioner Frolik first.
I had a question regarding the town's current requirements for sidewalk connectivity within a residential area. I know we've got a, we're showing two-foot sidewalk on one side and four-foot on the other. I just wanted to understand the requirements.
Chairman Anderson, Mr. Frolik, we met with the applicant several times to discuss this street cross-section and the pedestrian, the concerns we had with the pedestrian connectivity that they were proposing at the time. We ended up discussing this in quite a bit of detail and determined that, that we were comfortable with a four-foot sidewalk on one side. We, we understand that these are private streets. We're anticipating, and so is the applicant, that the speeds will be lower due to the design and to the material that's going to be on the roads than what you would see in a typical residential neighborhood. It meets fire code requirements from, from a width and, and access standpoint for fire trucks, and we were comfortable due to the lower speeds that were probably going to be generated. We were comfortable with them only providing a sidewalk on one side. Even though the sidewalk is kind of an at-grade sidewalk, it's kind of a, it's a ribbon curb type sidewalk, it doesn't have a six-inch vertical curb. There is no parking allowed along these, this, along these private streets, so there won't be any conflict from vehicles. So town staff and our transportation department and our, and, and fire was, they were comfortable with this, and we feel it meets, meets pedestrian connectivity. I mean, it provides connectivity if they, if you walk down that, that four-foot strip, it'll connect to the park. And you can also walk, there's a trail system that runs through the middle of this development as you can see on this plan, and there's a trail to, along the south boundary, and it kind of curves along to the west side of the site as well. And you can even get out to Val Vista and Ray Road from this project as well. So staff believes that they've met the requirements. I don't believe there's anything in the code that requires a sidewalk on both sides of the street. I hope that answers your questions or helps resolve some of your concerns to a certain extent.
Yeah, that does help. And then as far as, instead of doing three-foot sidewalk on each side, you went with, they're recommending four and two. The four-foot is to meet ADA requirements, is that correct?
Chairman Anderson, Commissioner Frolik, that would be correct.
Okay, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Vice Chair Bloomfield.
One of the neighborhood concerns was traffic, and it usually is. When, when a new project gets developed, there's always the concern of additional traffic. So in, in light of that, has there been a study, and forgive me if you had it in your staff report, I didn't read everything, but has there been a study comparing what the traffic counts would be with it, in its current zoning with, with commercial versus this product and this residential style development?
Chairman Anderson, Vice Chair Bloomfield, the applicant did prepare and submit a traffic impact analysis for this project site. And I, of the portions that I have read and the conclusions that are stated in the, in the report, the proposed, the, if this site was to be or remain commercial, per the, the traffic study and the, and the trip generation estimates, it would generate, I think, a little over 7,000 daily trips, vehicle trips per day. Rezoning it to residential, it reduces those daily trips to a little over 700. That's, if that's what I understood correctly in the traffic impact analysis, and I know the applicant can go into more detail on that and probably will. And so I believe that's what the traffic impact analysis states, which is, which is a drastic reduction in the number of daily trips. It, it doesn't generate residential, I mean, you only have people, mostly, most of the time, people that live in the neighborhood will be entering and exiting the property a couple, two or three, four times a day. I don't know how, what the traffic impact analysis states from that standpoint, but the impact analysis does provide information that the amount of traffic generated will be drastically reduced from what it would be if it was commercial.
That's what I expected, but I just, I wanted to confirm that that, that really had taken place and that we knew what that data was, so. And, and then one other concern on the layout, and I know we've seen it, but refresh my memory, on the dead end, the dead ends into the park, the dead end street, I realize that they're all private, and I'm sure fire has had their, had their looksee at this project and, but help me understand how that's approved without a turnaround and, and that kind of stuff.
Chairman Anderson, Vice Chair Bloomfield, so I assume that you're referring to this situation here. So this was reviewed by the fire department, and they were comfortable with, with that situation as I believe it meets the, the requirement of, that they can't back out more than 150 feet. And they feel that they can get the truck back in there and they'll have enough hose length to be able to access lot number 67 and I think that's lot, lot number 101, in that they will not have to back up more than 150 feet, and they were comfortable with that situation.
Okay. I just wanted the explanation. I'm sure it was, had been resolved, but I just didn't know it how, so.
Anyone else?
Did, did they have any comments from traffic on the queue along Val Vista turning inward, going southbound? Did traffic have any recommendation or was there any discussion regarding that?
Chairman Anderson, Commissioner C. Fuentes, I don't recall any discussion on that. I know that the traffic impact analysis provides some information as to how that left-hand turning movement into the site will be accommodated and, and what the volume will be, but I don't recall that there was any significant concerns from our town traffic department. I believe, I, correct me if I'm wrong, I don't know if the applicant can correct me, but I believe that the traffic department was requiring some type of modification to the, I think there might be an island there, a small island, if, I don't remember if there is or not. Oh, okay. They removed the gate, and I think that took care of some of the concerns, but I don't recall that there were any major concerns from our traffic department concerning that.
Thank you.
From a stacking or queuing standpoint, since they removed that gate. If the gate was going to be there, they would have required, been required to have a deeper entrance throat, which, they removed it, so that kind of removes that concern from that standpoint of stacking into that entrance.
Anyone else? All right, so let's move along to the applicant, if they'd like to come up and make a presentation. You just state your name for the record, and you'll have 10 minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. My name is Stephen Earl. I am a resident of Gilbert. I am here tonight in behalf of New Village Homes. The president of that company is Reed Porter. He's been a resident of the city of, or the town of Gilbert for 23 years. He was the president of three different homebuilding companies, Trend Homes, Ryland Homes, and CalAtlantic Homes. And in that position, he has built thousands of homes in the town of Gilbert. He left CalAtlantic a couple of years ago in order to create New Village Homes. Purpose of this company is to find these infill sites that are always challenging as to how you develop them and find a niche that, that addresses a market share for young professionals who want a beautiful home or empty nesters who have raised their family and now want to still live in a beautiful home but don't want to have a big yard to take care of and would like rather amenities provided. And so that's exactly the kind of genesis of why we're here on these two requests. The, as Keith indicated, we're dealing with a corner parcel here of 12 net acres that has been zoned commercial shopping center since the 1995, 1997 timeframe, when Ashland, Ashland Ranch was created. In fact, at our first neighborhood meeting, there was a concern that, raised by the HOA member, board members, that there was a CCNR or plat issue that would prevent any other use other than commercial. I'm pleased to report to you that that legal dispute between the underlying owner and the HOA was resolved last week, as long as the applicant, New Village Homes, builds the 101 home plan that we're showing you tonight. Otherwise, they reserve their right to object to anything else. Obviously, when you have a parcel that's not been developed commercially for more than 20 years, there's always the question, well, what is the right use? As, as evident in this little slide that we provided to the city and mentioned by Keith, there is a great deal of retail, both a mile to the north where you have Fry's and Home Depot, and a mile to the south where you have Sprouts at Williams Field Road and Val Vista, which is candidly where our family shops because we're only a mile from there. So we don't have commercial at our corner, at Lindsay and Williams Road, but we only have a mile to go in either way to reach all the commercial we need. A little bit farther you get to Santan Mall. So when development passes over a site and it doesn't develop commercially, then you're left with, well, what do you do with that vacant, unproductive property? Most cities in the valley have had to deal with that as the cities mature and, and you end up with these challenging infill sites. Typically, or not typically, but many times you see apartments or either higher-density townhouse or road development occur on these kinds of corners. We had a different idea, and, and that's really the genesis of why Reed is here with this request, and that is to build something that really, as Keith indicated, doesn't fit neatly into either SFA, which would be attached, these are not attached, or SFD. They are detached, but they do need some deviations from standards. The concept here is to build essentially a Spanish village. It has a European intimate, close-in feel. The streetscape that you're seeing here has cobblestone or pavers as the street section, and I'll show you a little bit more about that in a minute. But you can see the architectural design that's being proposed here, and while that's not in front of you, this very drawing is a result of those plans, and they will be submitted to the town. So what you're seeing here is what you will see later is a design review package. You can see a lot of articulation and, and movement to this. You can imagine the units on the other side of that same street creating a rather intimate feel. Where there's a, where there's a bonus room or detached accessory structure, that does come out close to the street. That's by plan because that, that element brings a building closer to the streets, so again, keeping the traffic calm. But where there's not one of those, there's, you can see a courtyard. The homes are actually pushed back 20 feet from the street, far beyond the requirement. It's only that bonus room that we really wanted to bring out closer. All the landscaping you see in this rendering is installed by the developer and maintained by the HOA. Again, low maintenance because the HOA takes care of these things. Now, let me super, go in on, on just the, the road and how the units relate. This is a very important slide to show how this actually works. When you see the lanes of the street, while the total is 26 feet wide, which meets the fire code, we've designed the lanes to only be eight feet, eight feet, six inches, and that's where the cobblestone or pavers will be, and that's to narrow, in the mind of a perceived, perception of a driver, that he's in a narrow lane and the surface is uneven, and the, the bonus rooms come out closer to the street. It's all supposed to have, and we believe it will have, a very intimate feel, especially when you have courtyards that can also come out close to the street. People will be able to walk across this surface easily to visit their neighbors. Whole idea here is to make the pedestrian predominant, not the car. Car slows down, has to go into a garage or into a driveway. We'll point out that every home has a two-car garage, they also have a two-car driveway that's 24 feet in length, it's not, it's even over-length, and there's, if you can see on this last slide, there's an overhang over the garage doors, so that, that's an eight-foot overhang. So a lot of times you have garage doors right out, you have garage dominant look. This is the opposite of that, and that also helps with the bonus room coming out. Now, look at the side yards, where we have a deviation. So again, the front yard deviation is only for that small section where there's a bonus room. It will be landscaped in front of it, otherwise we meet the code. And then on the side yards, I wanted to show this specifically. In any given side yard, that is where people will be living. This is a beautiful home with a high per-square-foot value, and they want to have indoor/outdoor living. So when they go to their side yard, that's all well-articulated, easy to maintain, but it may have tables and chairs and outdoor furniture, a spa, water features, flowers, a place for pets. And that is at the front, 13 feet in depth, even where the front door is, it's six feet, which meets code, and then in the back where that, that, that side yard is nine feet deep. Now, let me show you what that looks like. This is an actual unit that's been built, and you can see how they, every home will feature these very long collapsible glass, sliding glass doors that are more than nine feet in width, and all of that allows for beautiful indoor/outdoor living, but without a lot of, you know, Saturday maintenance. This is a rendering we did of the same thing. Every, every home will feature this, this kind of an opening for indoor/outdoor living from the living room and kitchen area, and this shows a water feature and a barbecue. Now, all this relates to this mosaic that we've created here. When you take all these units and put them together, there's been a question about, well, have you got too much density here? You seem like you're packing the site because you need deviations. But the deviations are really only related to that little bonus room that's up in the front, which has a real important purpose, both for, you know, calming traffic, for creating another space that's one-story, for bringing the, the opportunity for living in a separate room for aging parents or for an adult child, or maybe for an office or fitness facility. But see how this all fits together. So all these are private streets. Again, think of those narrow eight-foot, six-inch lanes for, for cars to travel in, means that people- that people will be out in their front yards, going back and forth across these private drives. The red line you see here is a pathway that we specifically put into this project, not only because it's a great amenity with low ballard lighting, because it activates the adjacent landscaping that we're next to our people, and it goes essentially around the entire site. Keith showed you these exhibits that just show how the, the entrances are integrated with the architecture of the project. They're deep, they're lush, they're land, heavy landscaping and Spanish design. Again, going back to how this all fits together, and again, we will be submitting this as our proposal. Now you can see how these streets are designed to not have any parking on either side, to allow people, visitors, to park in the driveway that's over length, for even the biggest truck to park in if it's a visitor, and how some homes will have that courtyard, about 40 to 50% might have the bonus room. Many homes can't because of the presence of mechanical equipment or something for the project. And then overall, it has a lot of flexibility to it. This is the buffer that we discussed with the neighbors adjacent to us. We did have three meetings with them, to show them that the minimum tract is 27 feet, the maximum is over 90 feet. And in that area, not only could we have that trail, but we could put large canopy shade trees, so that they would really be buffered well. Not only, and this is, so we're not trying to put our units right up against them with a five- or 10-foot backyard, have a significant open space area, that again is landscaped and maintained by the HOA, not, not subject to individuals maintaining their rear yard. And then we indicated to all the neighbors and to the staff that if there's any window at that second level that looks toward one of the homes in Ashland Ranch, we would make it rain glass, or opaque, so there would be no question about privacy, although the trees should grow up well beyond the height of these buildings. So there were comments raised in our work with the neighborhood. Not only did we have the two major meetings and the three subsequent meetings, so for a total of five, we also went outdoor to door, especially along the streets nearest our project. We heard about that comment about congestion from traffic, and so we did compare it to the shopping center, which I guess some people thought would be better, and of course, that's over 7,800 trips per day. And even if you look across this chart, which is a professional, stamped by a professional traffic engineer, even the peak hours were less than, in every case, and were, you know, an eighth, or even, yeah, about an eighth of the amount of traffic associated with a commercial use. We were told that the school was overcrowded, and that's where we had two more meetings.
Can I interrupt? Your 10 minutes is up.
Oh, okay.
So, if you have like a closing statement, if you can make that. I have a few cards here of the public that want to come up and speak, and then when they're done, you'll have an opportunity to come back up.
I appreciate that, and I can discuss these issues of the neighborhood concerns when I come back up. I just want to be able to show, this is a kind of a concluding slide, this is a very unique project. We believe it'll be a Spanish village, as I've indicated before, where we've spent a lot of time making sure it fits well together. We think it's an excellent land use for an infill parcel like this, where the values of these homes will be, on a per-square-foot basis, very comparable to the actual ranch. It's just they're on a smaller lot.
Okay. Thank you for your presentation, and like I said, you'll have an opportunity to come back up. So right now, I'd like to go to the public. I do have some cards here. The first one is Andrew Black. Are you still here?
I am.
All right, if you could just state your name, town of residence, and you'll have three minutes.
How many minutes?
Three.
Three?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Oh, we've got some supporters here.
Listen, I just want to explain to you, I came from California, real quick, and I moved out of California, came here, loved this town. It's a beautiful town, but it's turned into be quite busy, so to speak, and I just think that this project will just complicate matters even worse. That's just quickly saying that. And I'd also like to express the fact that I was at those meetings that they had prior to this, and you may not be aware, but out of the 100 or so people that showed up at the meeting, I would guess easily, because I've talked to many of them and I heard them speak out, that 90, 95% of them were opposed to this. This is a bad move on the city's part if they allow something like this to take place. I just am totally opposed to it. Now my friend speak as well.
Hi, my name's Ron Marks. I'm a neighbor. I live in Ashland Ranch as well. I just want to say, I agree with you 100% from the September 9th meeting. It is just a little too much. We will go from 2.5 to three units per acre to eight, just seems to be quite a bit. It's just too much, and we did talk to them about traffic through Ashland Ranch. It wasn't just the traffic on Valvista and Ray, it's the traffic coming through to get to the schools and stuff with 101 units. And not only that, it's, we were concerned about the little casitas too, and they want to say, for the people who retire, nobody's going to retire into a two-story, at least I don't know many that have been here for 62 years, and I don't know many retirees that get into a two-story. I believe that that front unit is going to be a rental property to help pay for this, and I just don't agree with that. I think you'd need, the commission needs to, think about that 7.08, and I appreciate you bringing that up on September 9th as well, and I do appreciate your time.
All right, thank you for your time.
One last thing?
Yeah, absolutely, you still have time.
These gentlemen here have painted a real nice picture, but when you paint a pig, a pig is still a pig. That's all I can say.
Thank you for your time. Next would be Leonard, excuse me if I, Stupski, thank you. Again, if you could just state your name and town of residence, for the record, please.
Good evening, I'm Len Stupski. I live in Gilbert in Ashland Ranch. Built my home there in 1999. Reason I'm here, I agree with these gentlemen, they're trying to put too many houses in there, it's like trying to put 10 pounds of potato in a five-pound bag. Let me get back to where I belong. Not against them changing from shopping center residential, but strongly against proposed density. They've got 14.27 acres, and they want to put 101 homes on it. For example now, on December 21st, 2017, a town council approved a minor general plan amendment and rezoned the northwest corner of Lindsay and Ray. It's a real property of 13.45 acres, with a land use classification of 3.5 to 5, single-family detached homes per acre. A preliminary plat was, preliminary plat was recently approved for 53 units on that parcel, and it complements the surrounding neighborhoods of SF7 and SF15. So a precedent has been set. In comparing both sites, the southwest corner of Ray and Valvista is only 0.82 acres larger, and the builder's looking to put 101 homes in this, in this property. It doesn't seem to fit with the character of the adjacent SF8 neighborhood, and the visual impact it will have on our properties on the perimeter of the new development. I'm concerned about the safety factors here. The building homes so close together, you could stand between them at certain points and touch them scares me. We all remember the horrific fire here at the Broadstone Apartments. Fortunately, they weren't occupied, they were one on top of the other as well. I personally don't believe there's going to be room on the streets for your emergency vehicles, even though the fire department looked at it, but they, even though it's no parking, I could show you streets that are no parking, there's cars parked on those streets all the time. I'm concerned about the one sidewalk. Your child wants to go and visit his friend two doors away, he's got to cross the street to walk on a sidewalk, and across the street again, thus taking two chances of getting hit by a car. The single setback, the setback that they have for the additional casita or whatever, it's too close. What if a car runs off the street and runs into it? And I just, I don't think it's safe for that amount of, that amount of homes they want to put in that property. That's all I got to say.
All right, thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Next up is Kim Binion. Kim, you still here? Kim, so we'll move along. Amy Peterson.
Hi, I've lived in Gilbert for 33 years. In Ashland Ranch, we've lived for 10 years. We bought our home without ever seeing the inside, just on our lot size only. We have 2/3 of an acre. We planned for it to be a five-to-seven-year home, and fell in love with the community and the location, and our church community, and decided to double our house size, went through a major remodel that took almost three years, and turned it into our dream home. We will be there forever, we plan. And we were extremely concerned when we heard about this project, 101 homes. There is a cluster home neighborhood in, that is just across the street off of, in Wester Skies, and there is quite a bit of crime happening in that neighborhood. The SWAT teams, we, I have several friends that live in that neighborhood, and they're constantly complaining about the crime that's going on in there. So we were concerned that this was going to be another one of those neighborhoods, and it was going to be very close to us. We went to the meeting, and when we saw the layout, when we saw what they were planning, and how upscale that they were planning to make it, we, our concerns were much lessened. We really appreciated the developer having additional meetings with us, those that bordered the fence of the property, and allowing us to have input on what kind of trees would be built there, addressing concerns of setback. We understand, and are thrilled that it will be changed from commercial to residential. We do not want to live next to commercial. We would appreciate, we dreamed of buying that property and developing it ourselves into acre properties, but that financially is not feasible and would not, due to the cost of the land. I understand, we totally support property rights and landowner rights, and understand that you have to make a profit on this property, and having 101 homes, I don't know that it needs that many to make a profit, but we understand that it's, that's their right, and they've addressed the, the traffic concerns, the school overcrowding, I don't think is an issue at all. Ashland Ranch can totally handle that. And my own children, we live very close to Ashland Ranch, and they go to charter schools. Charter schools are very popular, most, there is, so I don't think that's an issue. We appreciate the fact that there will be more density there that will be buffering the sound from the intersection for our home. We appreciate the green belts that'll be there. We're thrilled that they would build a community like this instead of commercial. Thank you.
Thank you for your time. And I do have one last card here from Ron and Deb Marks. They do not wish to speak, but are opposed to the project. At this time, the applicant would like to come back and address any of the comments that they've heard.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would like to discuss the traffic issue. As I indicated, if it were commercial, it would be obviously eight times more traffic than what we're proposing, but then I heard, well, it's the traffic into the, into Ashland Ranch. And so when you look at the actual site plan, our access points are only to Valvista and to Ray, and they're at the median breaks on both of those arterials. We have no other access points into Ashland Ranch of any kind, so for our people to go into Ashland Ranch, it would have to be to go to school, I assume, or to visit a friend. We don't think the amount of traffic is from our project will have any negative impact on Ashland Ranch. As we indicated, there was a concern about Ashland Ranch school being overcrowded, but we met with the principal afterwards. She indicated that actually there has been a decrease in student population over the last five to six years, and that's kind of natural. As Ashland Ranch has matured, the kids have now grown up into high school, and they've know, and so you have a reduction in the elementary school. And it turns out, there's more than enough capacity for the children that may come from this development. We did hear this concern about you're gonna, you're packing the site, that's the reason I spent so much time going through how we've knit this project together and make it work. Now some could say, well, take 10 units out of it, and it'll be better, but you take 10 units out of the project, you haven't changed the dynamics of this. It's meant to be an intimate feeling here of that Spanish village I talked about, where cars have to be going slow in these private drives, because the pedestrian is much more important. So you narrow it up, you create a surface that's uneven with pavers or cobblestones, you bring part of the house a little bit forward, so it feels like you need to be going slow. Because in our view, these people are across from each other. Their front doors are across, not their sides or backs, but they'll have an opportunity to come out of their homes and go to their neighbors across this way. So it is unusual, maybe first of its kind in Gilbert. We think it'll be a fabulous new project in terms of the side yards that, we went over that in some depth. This is a unique feature, where you can live out your side yard, where you have indoor-outdoor living, but you don't have high maintenance. So you have these kinds of things, and then you go to the community facilities, such as the pool, the totlot that's covered, the play area that we're showing in the southwest corner, where you can, you know, have, play baseball, or not baseball, but catch, or frisbee, or those kinds of things, so you can have activities in that area. And then you got the trail. In my neighborhood, everybody seems to be wanting to walk a trail, and this has a protected trail around both the south and west sides, so you can really walk all the way around this project, and there's, and there's open spaces through the middle of the project. In terms of its values, these homes are step-up homes, as has been indicated, they're upscale in terms of the cost per square foot. You can see that in the rendering. And so, you know, we're 2,000 to 2,400 square feet in size. That's, that's not a entry-level type home. On these kinds of corners, you frequently get requests for apartments, or maybe townhomes with row housing, where they're all attached. That's why these are so unique, the fact that they're detached. And we did a pricing of all the homes that have been sold in Ashland Ranch in the last year, and they range from the three, high 300s to the, to the mid 500s in recent sales, because of the uptick in values. Our home prices are going to be in the high 300s and above, so even though they're more density, the, the project is a beautiful home on a smaller lot that will have the front yards maintained by the HOA. And then we did, it was important to us to make sure we had a, an opportunity for these neighbors to select both. Both are shade trees, they're evergreen trees, and one's a live oak, the other's a evergreen elm. Those, those will completely ring both borders of this property, and in some cases, there's two, two rows of those trees, that will grow up and provide a great green canopy between our properties. And as I said, we did go out in the last couple of weeks and, and showed all these new exhibits. At that first neighborhood meeting back in January, we didn't have these yet, and so once people saw what we were actually going to build as an upscale village-type unit in an intimate setting, you can see the green folks that signed, if it's not, if there's not something there, it means we knocked on their door four or five times and we're not able to ever talk to them. There were a few that were neutral, and there was one fellow we encountered that was opposed. So we think we've done our very best to explain the project to our neighbors, and once they understand it, they have been more supportive. And we apologize that we haven't been able to convince the folks that are here tonight, but we're happy to sit down with them and walk through how the units will function better in their minds. Glad to respond to any questions you might have.
Okay, thank you for that. Does anybody on the dais have any questions for the applicant? Not seen any, so thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Chairman.
So do you want to bring Keith back up? Is there anything for Keith?
Keith, do we know if there's a minimum for street width for drive aisles for, is that 24 still in this case, or is it because it's private that changes?
Chairman Anderson, member, Commissioner C. Fuentes. The really, the minimum for a fire truck, width for a fire truck is 24 feet, for the fire truck to be able to get, maneuver safely. But this is a different type of cross-section. It's, it's not your typical residential local street cross-section, it's kind of modified. It's private streets, maintained and owned by, as tracks owned by the HOA, but the minimum for, that a fire truck needs for, to circulate, to maneuver up and down these streets is 24 feet wide. Hopefully, hopefully that answers your, your question.
Are we sure that that's occurring through all the streets, then?
Chairman Anderson, member, Commissioner C. Chairman Anderson, member, Commissioner C. Fuentes, yes, it will occur throughout. All the streets will be at least 26 feet wide. And the, the street that comes in from Val Vista will be wider than that. The main, kind of, I don't know what they're calling that, Boulevard into it, that'll be wider. But all the other streets in front of the homes will be a minimum of 26 feet wide.
Thank you. So when you say that the street is 26 feet wide, I mean typically, isn't that measured from inside curb to inside curb for traditional streets where this one looks like it's including the sidewalks?
Chairman Anderson, that's typically yes, how it would be measured. The, in this situation, they designed the, that sidewalk, that four-foot sidewalk, they designed it to be, to have no curb, vertical curb. So that would be part of the street if a fire truck needed to, to maneuver. But the vehicles will be staying within that eight-foot travel path that, that Mr. Earl was talking about. But if and when a fire truck needs to get in there, they, they would probably have to drive onto that four-foot sidewalk to a certain extent if they needed to. But that's why it was designed flush with the, with the actual street itself, was to meet that minimum or that width from, from the fire department standpoint.
And then you're just relying on the textured pavement for everyday vehicular traffic to identify their boundary where they're supposed to be driving. And they're not going to be driving, I understand it's flush, but they're not driving on the sidewalks.
Chairman Anderson, that's the idea. We, as Mr. Earl was stating, the, the speeds will be low enough and they'll have that pavement and the cobblestones to where we hope that they'll be able to stay where they're supposed to be.
That's the key word there, "hope."
That, that's, in a perfect world, that's the way it would function.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
And just, just a note, sorry to interject again, there will be, and I don't think this was mentioned, there will be signs placed along the street. I believe there will be fire lane signs and no parking signs placed along the street as well at certain distances. I can't remember what the fire department agreed to. I think every 100 feet or so, I think, 75 to 100 feet, was it 75 feet? There will be a sign that will state, "Fire Lane, No Parking."
Okay. And then I just have one more quick question for you. Regarding those optional rooms that are out in front, there was a comment made earlier that there was a fear that those might get rented out. So there's nothing in the zoning code would allow a homeowner there to rent out those, those units there? Is that correct? Because I'm kind of looking at the floor plans that's on the blow up and one, you know, has a bathroom in it and the other one doesn't have the bathroom. So I can't imagine anybody wanting to rent out that one room to somebody that doesn't have a bathroom or a kitchenette or something in there. Is there anything in the, in the LDC or zoning codes that kind of protect that from happening?
Chairman Anderson, members of the commission, I'm, you know, I'm not 100% for sure on that. I may have to defer to, to our legal counsel or, I don't know if Catherine knows the question answer to that. I'm not exactly sure on that, as far as that requirement is concerned. I don't believe there is anything that would prohibit them from renting it.
It's prohibited in the CCNRs.
Chairman Anderson, Mr. Earl just told me that they will prohibit that in the CCNRs?
Okay, perfect.
But from a town perspective, I'm not exactly sure. I don't think there's anything that prohibits it, if I'm correct.
If the applicant's saying that it's, it will be in the CCNRs, if they can't do it, that answers the question.
Okay.
Chairman, do we need to make that a stipulation of the zoning, or is that going to be, come at a later time? Not, not yet. It would be on a pre-plat or something like that.
Well, if we have nothing more for Keith, we can close the public hearing right now.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, if I may make a clarification, the applicant is requesting a minimum lot area of 2,610 square feet, which would be an adjustment from code. So under condition letter D as in dog, we would need to add that minimum lot area to that table. It's just a point of clarification. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for that. Okay, is there any discussion? Commissioner Frollick?
First off, I just wanted to thank the applicant for what I think is a really good project. There's, you know, I did have some concerns with the sidewalks, but understanding that town staff is good with that, I think that's eased my concerns. There are, I've seen other neighborhoods that have sidewalk, either one sidewalk, just a sidewalk on one side. Some neighborhoods, even one that's close to me in Gilbert, that has no sidewalks. And I just wanted to make sure, what are the current standards and expectations from the town regarding that? As far as the product, this is tremendous detail that they've given us this early to really see the whole picture, and I do appreciate that. I think the finished product will, will be a really nice project as far as the concerns for traffic. When I saw the traffic report, because I had, I had seen this last week, and I looked at the numbers, it didn't surprise me that the shopping center would be a lot higher. I'm a civil engineer and I see these traffic reports quite often, but I'm not a traffic engineer, so I decided I'll, I'll go talk to my traffic engineer. He looked at it and he, he also felt that those were numbers that did not surprise him. He said, depending on how that shopping center were developed, you could debate what those final numbers would be, but they're going to be at least four, three, four times higher. In this case, they showed them about eight times higher than residential. So I feel fine as far as the traffic's concerned. And as far as the, the rest of the site, in terms of pedestrian access, I think they did a really good job. My only concern was, was on the streets. And I do think there will be a calming effect for the drivers, seeing the different colors of, between concrete and pavers. And then having a valley gutter in the middle should really help the driver visually want to slow down. Those are my thoughts.
Thank you for that. Anyone else? Vice Chair Bloomfield?
Thank you. I, I've had the opportunity to meet with the applicant and listen to him tell of, of his goals and, and why he's developing this. And so I have appreciated that opportunity to hear from him because it, it is real easy to look at that land plan and say, wow, that is, that is trying to shoehorn in a whole bunch of lots in a, in a property. So I, I also appreciated, like Commissioner Frollick, the additional detail and the exhibits that were created to, to share, to tell the story as to why this general plan amendment, this zoning that's, that's before us here tonight makes sense. Without that level of detail, it would have been very hard to, to agree that this was a good thing. But given the exhibits and given, given the presentations and knowing that the town staff has all had a fair shot at this and that the neighbors have also been able to, to come on board, helpful. Given the density and, and the newness and the, and the new type of development or the new product, it's understandable that you would not get everyone on board. And so I, I'm not concerned, I'm grateful for, for this new project. I think it'll work out really, really well and I'm excited to see it come, come to fruition. So I would be inclined to, to vote for the general plan amendment and the zoning on this one.
Okay, thank you for that. Anyone else?
Yeah, sure, I'd like to speak. Just in general, I, I was able to attend a meeting of some of the builders recently that were at the Valley Forward event. So this is Lennar, Richmond, Richmond American, and a lot of them explained that kind of in the, I guess you would say the inner suburbs, they've had issues trying to find land that they can develop that's a little bit more affordable and, you know, provide some type of housing for, whether it be empty nesters or maybe young professional millennials that are now stepping into their first home. So I think hopefully this would be a product that if we're giving this, you know, this opportunity to develop, that it could afford those people a place to, to find those, you know. And I know that we can't control the affordability of it, right? We don't have anything in our city of Gilbert requirements that say, hey, look, there's got to be so many units affordable. But it would be good to see how this could kind of meet that need, if, if, if there was any way that maybe some of the units could be more affordable than others by having a, maybe a smaller square footage or something that would allow maybe someone to buy this as their first home, right? Maybe they say, I can't have the bonus room and I'm not, you know, I'm not sure, but maybe there's an opportunity for that. But I think that they've worked really hard to create a great community atmosphere in what I've seen in the, in the, in the presentation. And I think they've worked with the community in picking trees that they felt would be appropriate and, and trying to block sightlines and whatnot and making the move with the glazing on the second floor. So I definitely would be in, in approve and I definitely am supportive of this. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I, I would agree. I think this is a case of, of really taking this property and making the, the highest and best use of a piece of ground that, that's had some challenges. So I think they, I admire the work they've done and I would certainly support the project.
All right, thank you. So Catherine, the clarification of the square footage, is that for the general plan, the zoning, or both?
It's for the zoning case. You have some conditions of approval and it was letter D. We would just need to add to that table the minimum lot area as 2,610.
Okay, thank you. So I guess on the first one, we'll look for a recommendation for item 22, GP 18-07?
Chairman, I recommend to the town council approval of GP 18-07 to change the land use classification of approximately 14.27 acres of real property generally located at the southwest corner of Val Vista and Ray Road from shopping center SC to residential five to eight dwelling units to the acre land.
Recommendation for approval, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Frollick. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Recommendation carries. Moving along to item 23, Z 18-11, is there a recommendation?
Chairman, I recommend approval for zoning case Z 18-11. Same project with the conditions listed in the staff report with, with the addition that, that we accommodate the total land, or total lot area being reduced from 3,000 square feet to 2,610.
That work? Okay, great, thank you. Is there a second? Second from Commissioner Smith? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Recommendation carries. For all those that came out to speak on this case, thank you so much for your time and coming out here to voice your opinion on this. Greatly appreciate it. Move along to item 24, Z 1824, request to amend the town of Gilbert Land Development Code. Amy?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of Planning Commission. I can give you an abbreviated version and just touch on the highlights of what's changed since the last time we were together last month, or I can do a very quick overview of the entire text amendment.
I think we want the entire text amended, everything that you're doing. We want to know everything.
Everything.
Yes.
I could do that. All right. And I'll even practice going slowly. So we are talking about electronic changing message displays.
You know, that was a joke, right? You're going to do the abbreviate? Okay.
I want to see how long it would take. All right. I'm really going to touch on a lot of the highlights of what, the few things that we've changed and some of the comments that we've gotten from the public since the last time we spoke. A majority of what we presented last month is the same and there haven't been any major changes. I will note that we are primarily just touching the sign regulations. We did put general terms and graphics in there just in case, but so far we haven't found that we needed to amend any of those. As far as the highlights of what we're looking at, it is the changeable message displays for wall, marquee and monument signs in all districts except residential with the caveat asterisk of if it is a non-residential use in a residential district, you can have a changing message display, monument sign for up to 50% of the sign area. But going on with that, we would have electronic changeable message with full motion video, so we're talking animation here in commercial, HVC and GVC zoning districts. There is a prohibition now on scrolling signs that would be removed. And we would add a prohibition on signs emitting sound that draws, specifically try to draw attention to the sign or the content of the sign. So we're looking at marquee signs. Previously, we're only allowed to be manual change and now they will be full automation. And there's exposed bulbs that was, were always allowed for some exposed bulbs for signage in the Heritage District and on marquees, but now it will be allowed in the commercial, HVC and GVC districts with less limitations. And of course, we do not want to see any components of the sign such as the electronic components visible from the outside. And I'm going to kind of skip ahead here to some of the things that came from the RDC and public input. We did have a resident who wrote a very long letter asking a lot of questions about this text amendment, and this resident does live in the Heritage District, so it is a little more geared for that. And they were concerned about what is the impact to the residential community. You know, in the HVC, there is SF6 and multifamily medium zoning, as well as loft living above is a potential for the Heritage District. But they were wanting to know, how does this affect any adjacencies? And in our code, we do have provisions that within 50 feet of residential zoning districts, you cannot have eternally illuminated signs, that they can only be 16 square foot and that they can only be up to, signs can only be up to 14 foot above grade. We also, they asked questions about visual noise pollution and illumination, and it's .3 at property lines, just as if it was any light on the site. So if a sign is a little too intense, there are ways to dial it down and bring it into compliance. Public safety concerns regarding changing message as a distraction on the road. We have asked for an input from the police department and we have yet to receive that, but there are pros and cons with each of that and you can find articles addressing it from both directions. So the deletion of strikeout of marquees shall not be visible from adjacent residential neighborhoods. The resident in the Heritage District thought that this was unacceptable. However, with loft living as a potential above in most of our commercial districts as well as our HVC and GVC, this would be in direct conflict with that if a loft was built directly on the project where the marquee is or adjacent to it. So we felt we had to remove that. And then as far as design guidelines, the, the individual thought that the design guidelines were not a publicly approved document by the town council. They are. The design guidelines for the Heritage District specifically do touch on signs, but very broadly. And if you're looking for sign specifics about how much area you get and the specifics of how it's constructed and how it's implemented, and you would look to the land development code, not to the design guidelines for the Heritage District or even to the redevelopment plan that was recently adopted. The individual thought that it should have been addressed in there. And that really is a broad 30,000 overview document. It is not a document that is for specifics, helping you to figure out how much sign allowance you get and where the sign could be on your building. Once again, another issue about co-compliance was candlefoot and lighting. And then the audio noise came from this and one of the commissioners, the redevelopment commissions, asked about that. And we did talk about it a little more at staff level and decide to implement it as a prohibition if it's directly trying to draw attention to the sign. With that being said, we are moving forward to a November 1st town council hearing. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you have about what the signs are. If you would like to look at some of the pretty pictures, I'm happy to flip back and forth. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you, Amy. Does anybody have any questions for staff? Like your presentation convinced us.
And there's a recommendation for you.
Thank you. So does anybody want to take a stab at the recommendation? I'm going to look at Commissioner John's down there.
I recommend approval for...
Mr. Chairman?
Sorry.
I'm sorry to interrupt. Did you open and close the public hearing and ask if there was any from one?
You know what? Thank you for that. I saw everybody in here, it's nothing but staff out there, so I just kind of skipped over it. Is there anybody from the public that'd like to address the commission on this case? Not seeing any. I'm guessing, Amy, you don't, you have nothing more to say? Okay, so we'll close the public hearing and now we'll call... Okay, so we'll close the public hearing, and now we'll call for a recommendation.
Recommend approval to town council for text amendment for Z 18-24.
Vice Chair, okay, so we got the recommendation from Chair Johns, second from Vice Chair Field. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say no. And carries. Now we'll move along to admin items. Item 25, Planning Commission Administration, consider approval of the 2018-2019 calendar regular meeting. Any discussion on this? I just kind of want to throw two items on there, the January 2nd and July 3rd, those are like right after holidays and before holidays. Is anybody okay with those two? Or do, do we have an option to move them to another day? A lot of people, I know, most of all my consultants, they shut down the last two weeks of the year, and I'm assuming a lot of people are going on vacation, it's not going to be around, especially on that July 3rd one.
You can always ask staff to propose a different, different dates for those specific ones.
I guess, I guess the question to the commission is, do we want to move those dates around, or does everybody feel comfortable with them? Or do we want to move one of them?
I would definitely move July 3rd.
Okay.
Gilbert's a ghost town in July, especially on that weekend.
And do we have to keep them on Wednesdays? So like, we just move it to the following Wednesday? Okay.
Chairman, I might suggest that you move the January 2nd one also, just because I, I happened to look at the calendars earlier today, and it's still school break until January 7th. So people could be traveling away, holidays, so might, same kind of thing with July 3rd.
Good point. So I guess we just move both of them to the following Wednesday?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, the January date would, and the July 10th.
Sounds much better.
Yes, definitely. So we're all good with that? Okay, so do we, do we have to vote on this? Okay, is there a motion on this?
I'll go ahead and motion to approve the Planning Commission calendar as stated with the, the two revisions to January and July.
There's a second?
Second.
Who made the second? Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say no. Okay, good. Planning Commission Minutes, consider approval of the minutes of the study session and regular meeting on September 5th, 2018. Is there a motion?
Moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Approved. Communication, report from Chairman and members of the commission on current events, I have nothing to report. Anybody else? Report from Council liaison, Vice Mayor, I'd like to first say, congratulations on the reelection, great to have, keep you on board and keep doing great things for our town.
Hello, there we go. Thank you so much, I appreciate that, Chairman. Very, very honored to be re-elected to, to represent the town of Gilbert, thank you very much. I wanted to thank you as, I mean congratulate you as the new chairman for the Planning Commission, and congratulations to Vice Chairman Bloomfield. Not sure if you were expecting that when you came in this evening, but at, at least they waited for you to do the final vote.
I, I did receive a text earlier, so...
Okay, good. So congratulations to both of you, and I appreciate you stepping up to represent the commission as you do. I wanted to congratulate Ashley McDonald, and she's already gone for the evening, but she's one of 20 members of our town staff that have been chosen to be part of a Park University cohort, so I think you know, and I reported to you, that Park University is our new tenant in the university building downtown Gilbert, and they're doing a cohort with our staff here at the town, and priority was given to future leaders of our organization. So you can congratulate Ashley when you see her next month, or at the end of this month at your next meeting. We will have an election on November 6th, the town of Gilbert has one question, it is called Question 1. The question, a yes vote on that would permit us to bond for the public safety training facility, which you saw during your study session this evening, so keep that in mind, and please turn your ballots in or get to the polling places on November 6th, and I think I'll see you before then, but just in case, I wanted to make sure I said that tonight. The general plan update has kicked off, there is a video that was shared on the town of Gilbert website and all of our social media today, if you would like to take a look at that. There's also a website under the Gilbertaz.gov website, so it's Gilbertaz.gov forward slash general plan update. So if you want to keep up to date on those updates as we're moving forward, please do so, and thanks again for all your time and patience this evening.
All right, thank you for that. Next, report from Planning Services Manager.
Thank you, Chairman Anderson. I appreciate all your effort this evening, I know these are complex projects, and we appreciate your expertise. The only other thing I wanted to remind you is your next meeting is on October 24th to discuss one of our, discuss the major general plan amendments that are under consideration right now. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Nothing more, we'll adjourn this and go back to study session. Z 18-17, LDC text amendment request. Keith, please.
Okay. Chairman Anderson, members of the commission, one last one here, and then I'm done for the night, for...